...here with them all. I'll begin with the roll call. Get on the bell. Here. Richard Lane.
Here.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Yes.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Blackman's rep Ken Colby is not here. Alternate Steve Malone.
Here.
Alternate Michael Sancho, not here, and alternate Brian Vertigel, not here. And we have a full board, so I'm not going to be able to see this anymore. So the agenda for this evening, we have under applications, public hearings. Number one, it's planning board number two, three dash zero two zero, and that's a site plan review. Fieldstone Land Consultants, P L L C on behalf of All Purpose Storage Swansea West LLC, request site plan review for construction of a multi-tenant services facility to be leased to various service businesses at 115 Bay Hill Road. The subject property is currently shown at tax map fifty-two, lot sixteen, in the rural agricultural district and the business district. Upon finding that the application meets the submission requirements of the site plan with the regulations, the board will vote to accept the application as complete, and a public hearing may follow immediately or will be scheduled for a time and date certain. Item number two under applications, that's planning board number two, three dash zero two two. This is a site plan review, and this is continued, the public hearing continued from our August twenty-fourth meeting. T F Warren Incorporated requests a site plan review on behalf of F W Web Company to construct a fifty-eight thousand and eighty-five square foot wholesale warehousing facility and associated site improvements on properties owned by Runway Sun Park LLC and Keith A. Bell and Kevin A. Bell, shown at tax map thirty-four, lots thirty-two and thirty-two dash one, at or near four seven one Old Holmes Highway. Subject properties are located in the business, residential, and rural ag districts. Item number three, planning board number two, three dash zero two five. This is a boundary line adjustment. Cardigan Mountain Surveyors requested boundary line adjustment on behalf of Hannah Reynolds-Brown and Jesse Brown with Dylan Dickerson and Dixon and Nicole Lust, David Hills and Pamela Hills Dexter, shown at tax map and lots number fifty-one dash fourteen, fifty-one fourteen one, fifty-one seventeen, for property zone on Sawyer's Crossing Road and Ashville Road. Subject properties are located in the rural ag district. Under discussions and other business, landscaping plan for market assets, zoning update, and any other business that may be required. First of all, our planning director wants to say a few words.
Yeah. So first of all, say thank you to everybody that come into the meeting tonight. A typical form for the meeting is if you'd like to come up, we'll open the public hearing. Do have a microphone located in the front there, you're welcome to walk up to that, use that. We ask you to use that as a service primarily because there's people that might be attending online, or for the recordings later, that way they can hear you. The other thing that I would like to do is actually introduce our planning assistant, Debbie Stefan Mayhew, is located right there in the front. Stand up for a second. Stefan has already been an integral part of the team, he's learned a lot in a very short amount of time, and you might have even members of the board or maybe other boards might have noticed emails already coming from him. I kind of threw him right through the fire, and he's done a really good job, so I just wanted to say that.
Well.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion?
You may make a motion. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I move that we prove all our adjournments.
Suspend.
We adjourn at eight-thirty P M. Move all our rest of our items to the next separate meeting.
Okay, a motion to when it becomes eight-thirty, that's the planning board adjourns and postpones everything else to the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Richard Lane. Is there any further discussion? Well, under discussion, I would say that eight-thirty was kind of early, and...
We did nine o'clock last time.
We did nine last time, but the reason I say that, even nine o'clock, in my opinion, is kind of early, even though it's kind of late for us sitting here, but we only meet every two weeks, and the applicants have to wait those two weeks, a big distance in between in order to get their business done at the planning board. And I just feel that the planning board should at least try and accommodate that a little bit, since we, again, only meet every two weeks. It's difficult for the applicants to get everything lined, difficult for them to plan sometimes, because they don't know what the planning board's going to do or say. That's only, my only opinion on that.
Jane was...
Anyway.
This is not related to that, really, but I feel that if appropriate, could we change the sequence of the things we're going to look at?
Yeah, we'll get to that after we do finish this motion.
Okay.
That's not to do with this motion.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get to that.
It kind of is.
Can we go ahead with the motion and reconsider at eight-thirty? See where we are?
Uh...
If we're close...
What are you saying there?
What I'm saying is if we're close to finishing up, rather than saying, okay, boom, we're done at eight-thirty, reconsider if it'll take maybe another half hour tops to get it out.
I would suggest a way to handle it, that as the evening wears on, if it's getting too late approaching, say ten o'clock or something like that, something like that, a motion can be made at any time there, that we postpone everything else until the next meeting, something like that. We could do that. Well, we have a motion on the floor, you can vote on, or withdraw, vote on that motion, and the motion is to, when it comes to eight-thirty, to postpone everything to the next meeting. And it was seconded. Any other discussion on that?
I would do that if we could take breaks every now and, you know, about every hour and a half, so that we can use the restroom or whatever we need.
That we can do, yeah, and nudging, you know, I forgot that stuff, you know, I even forgot your name in that last meeting.
Nice.
But, yeah, we can do that. If you would prefer to do it that way and want to withdraw your motion, that's fine, and if you, you know, if you do that, and it's getting late or something like that, you can always make another motion to do it.
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion, seconded, okay. Onto another matter. I think that's what Jane was talking about. Are you talking about moving the lot line or boundary line adjustment?
Yes.
To the head of the meeting? Yeah, because it's a small matter and these other things belong. So it's the boundary line adjustment over on Ashville there, is what Jane is suggesting that we move to the front of the line, to get that done there. Anyway, you want to make that motion?
I would move that we move that to the...
Okay.
Item one, because it shouldn't take very long.
I agree, you're right.
I'll second.
I'm thinking my brain itself. Is there any further discussion? Yes?
Oh, are you interested in that?
Yes.
Because they're looking at the calendar, and there's some, well, it's not for one, you know, perhaps they're told, they're part.
They might be saying that, but a lot of things might happen and could happen, and all this meeting starts, it's just long, so, you know, that's what I think about it. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? That the motion to move the boundary line adjustment to that, and all those who were indicating by saying aye. All those opposed, okay, we'll do that. So we have the minutes of August twenty-third and August, I mean, August twenty-fourth, so let's do it separately. August twenty-third is a separate, I mean, that special meeting on the zoning thing was over in North Swansea. Does anyone, actually, we're going to, I need a motion to approve those minutes. Second.
I move to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve by Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Richard, I guess, or makes second by Richard. Now, is there any further discussion? Any changes to the notes or anything like that? And all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Hi.
Aye, all those opposed. Okay, now let's get to the August twenty-fourth minutes, and we have motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Michael York to approve the August twenty-fourth minutes, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Jane, is there any further discussion? Any changes in those minutes?
Um, yeah, there's an error on page six, which is that there was a motion, a motion to, for changes in trees, and I opposed that.
Uh, that's page sixty-four.
Yeah.
Any other changes in the those minutes?
I think in the scale, the minutes, it shows two different sides, one fifty, one to sixty, and there, on the flat, it's one to eighty in certain sections. We changed it to just to be, we were going to accept it as a plural to the variance, variant scales, rather than showing specific numbers.
So what...
If I recorrect, if I remember correctly.
Because that was the waiver, we're talking about the waiver on the scale on the drawing, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is that on page six you're talking about here?
That is on page four, at the top.
Let's take a look at the sound plan.
The applicant requested waiver of scale one to sixty instead of one to fifty, and there is also a scale of one to eighty in a certain part of the flat that was presented.
And the motion we're talking about, let's see, grants a move to approve the waiver request for a scale of one to sixty on the flat?
Yeah.
And you're saying that it wasn't one to sixty that was approved?
That there are two different scales being used. One section was one to sixty, another was one to eighty, and it was suggested, and I thought we agreed, just to change it to the scale would be some sort of plural, that it would cover all, all the different sizes that were presented on there, or we can add also one to eighty.
Okay, so...
Just to be correct.
We wanted them as the scales that were presented on the drawings, I think is what we're talking about here, and everyone agrees that's what the motion meant, then just change it to, the motion was to accept the scales as presented on the drawing.
Okay.
Any other changes? And all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and we have just approved the...
Thank you.
Wait, so that brings up our first item, which we had moved, that number three, we moved to the top of the list, and that's the boundary line adjustment, and that's Cardigan Mountain Surveyors requesting a boundary line adjustment on behalf of Hannah Reynolds-Brown and Jesse Brown and Dylan Dickerson and Cole Lust, David Hills, Pamela Hills, Nick and Michelle, and that's not... Fifty-one dash fourteen, fifty-one fourteen one, fifty-one seventeen, and they're on Sawyer's Crossing Road and Ashville Road. And we have a public hearing, if anyone's seen it, anyone want to take a look at it there? I've seen it, want to pass it around, and is the applicant here?
Starting, man, look straightforward.
Hi, good evening, I'm Scott Sandborn of Cardigan Mountain Land Surveyors. First of all, I truly appreciate you sneaking up to the front of line, I don't think this is going to take up very much of everybody's time. I'm representing the property owners...
Could you say your name a little bit louder for our...
I'm sorry.
I didn't hear what your name is.
Oh, just appreciate you pushing me up in the agenda, because...
What's your name?
Scott Sandborn.
Scott Sandborn.
Cardigan Mountain Land Surveyors.
Okay.
The, I'm representing the owners of three properties, you've read the names in to the record, which is saving me the trouble. This is, involves three properties, two are a little, either side of three and a half acres, the third is just under forty acres. The short story is that the owners of the two small lots got together to do some logging and make some site improvements, and they were confused about which pins marked the back boundaries, so they pushed everything up and ended up with some encroachments, both on their own two properties and also on the larger property, and so this proposal is intended to solve that problem, and so we're, take without getting in, the numbers are all on the plan, it seems you can just take it from that, as opposed to me reading off a lot of different numbers and confusing everybody, but we're taking a piece from the middle property and annexing it to the subtly most property, and then we're taking a piece from the larger property, which is the first, furthest to the north, and annexing that to the middle property. The two smaller lots are both being made larger, so no approvals from the state are required for this. The large lot is going to go from forty acres to, I mean, from thirty-nine to thirty-eight acres. We're not impacting the frontage in any way, the lots are all currently in compliance with the zoning, and the three acre zoning of rural agricultural, and they will be, continue to be in compliance as, after the annexation. We're not impacting any of the site infrastructure, septic or water supplies or anything like that, so this is very simple and straightforward, other than the fact that there's a lot of names on the plan, and with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
Okay, thank you. And, yes, long story short, it solves a few problems on the tracks, and everyone is happy there.
That's the whole...
There is agreement with it, by the sounds of it. And is there anyone here to speak to this, other than the applicant? Anyone here for this?
Supposed to be this lot and that lot.
It's going to intersect an existing road.
Moving them over, yeah, they're hitting that line and moving it this way.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they're taking that, moving it that way, and they're taking this line which was here and moving it that way, so...
Who's just covering?
Yeah, and I guess it's fixing a few encroachments there. Any questions from the board? Nope, then, even though I didn't open the public hearing, I will close the public hearing, because we're deliberate. So it's a pretty straightforward lot line adjustment, everybody's happy with it, and a motion is...
Make a motion and we accept it.
My brain itself to accept the lot line adjustment. Seconded by Michael York, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicating saying aye.
Aye. Well, okay.
Well, okay, next item, number one, and that's the site plan review on the All Purpose Storage and West Swansea.
Take a break.
So, so, before we get to approving the application, or not approving the application, or something is completed or anything like that, we've got to nail down what it is for a use here. You know, we have it in two different places there, that is, some of it's storage, or business storage, the other is services on the application. The application states that it's for services. And just let me get some of that stuff here.
So Contractor Dave Facility is another name.
Yeah, I've seen that on there too, so, and we've had it a few different, different ways, but this is the application that they submitted, and the application proposed permitted use for zoning, and it is under services, to be rented out to various business, service businesses, plumbing, H V A C, landscaping, and electrical, and so on and so forth. So, services is allowed in the business district, so that's allowed to use there. However, it looks like it's set up as a multi-tenant, so it's going to have to treat it as a multi-tenant, as contractors or whoever has got space in there, come in, those are going to have to go through the planning board, all forty, however many are going to end up having there. I would say, anyway, I'm just seeing what the board thinks of that, but I think that's what it, it's under services, so, Richard, do you have?
Yeah, addressing this letter from the attorney, I think we're going, getting to pretty much the same problem.
Yeah, and so it's the...
And his conclusion is we can take no further application, further action until the zoning board...
It is, but Kim Iton, he's splitting hairs, which is his right and actually his job to do, but he says multi-tenant service facility, like this is a services facility, and it will be treated as a multi-tenant, but he's saying that he doesn't see the specific wording that says multi-tenant services facility in our, in our uses there, but our uses are general and they're broad, and they have to be generally broad, in order to allow businesses to come into town to work.
When you say services, you mean, is that what's listed in our ordinance as retail sales comma services?
It's, it's in our business zoning, it might be comma services in there, retail sales services.
So retail sales services implies to me, I don't know, I don't know, do we define that?
Let me find out for a second, I'll, I'll read you the exact wording here.
Okay.
Let's see, we are on page nine of our zoning ordinance.
Great.
Yeah, separated, okay.
Two different things?
Thank you. Business district, and it says, yeah, it's item N, and it's retail sales comma services comma, I mean, services semicolon, so retail sales services, the two separate items as uses.
And do we define services anywhere? Do we know what services means?
There's no clear definition as to what services are. But in fact, I went back to the nineteen ninety-eight minutes, from the last time this was approved, and even then, we should have defined services, so it's been a long-standing
So that's all right. If the board agrees that it's under the services as they have in their application, it does say services, what they're going under, we have to treat it like that, but it's, it's going to be a multi-tenant by the looks of it, and it's going to be more than a multi-tenant store, they're going to be working out of there, so it's not like the self-storage units that are to the right of this lot down the way. It's not like somebody's coming in stores and leaving there, they're working out of there, so we're probably going to have to treat it as a multi-tenant, so when they do get their tenants in there, tenants will have to come to the planning board, planning board to have a public hearing, and they're knowledgeable as they come through.
That should probably be the way to have it anyway, wouldn't you think?
You should be...
That way you know what's going in there and...
It's got to be fair, you know, because that's how we treat multi-tenant, the rest of the town there. If they're multi-tenant, they come in here as the multi-tenant uses. Now, this is a slightly different type of the setup there, which is pretty unique, and it looks like it's, you know, going to work out, I think it's, who knows, it's going to work out there, and if the town has more of them, then the planning board can, can decide in their procedures how to treat something like that. They could do a broad range of approvals, you know, these services can go in there, electrician, H V A C, wherever it is, under the broad of a unit, but we don't have that yet, so just pointing out before we get started that they would have to, you know...
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, you can't hear me, right? Let's see, is this any better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Doesn't that have a ver, if each individual occupant has specific needs, doesn't it have a bearing on how the building itself is designed, or is it going to be presented as just a shell, and how, because we have, you know, we have to approve electrical and sprinkling and stuff like that, so do we, do we expect that the entire building will be set up with adequate electrical for all, by...
Well, just, we're, we're kind of getting into details that we don't need to get into, but just to answer your question, quickly answer it, those would be, whatever the building is, or buildings are set for in the plans, before they get their C O, Mike Jasmine would be looking at it, and whatever they have on their plans for electrical and services, things like that, would have to be as a...
Each individual occupant.
If that's the way it's set up, we don't know.
Okay.
So, services, services is, if everyone's in agreement, this is probably a services, it's not a storage unit, this is a...
Not the services.
Yeah, so, and...
Yeah.
Michaels. Victoria?
And that's permitted in business, is it permitted in rural ag?
Um, no, it isn't, no.
Okay, so...
Okay, so, the ordinance says that if two zones overlap, then the least, the less restrictive one can encroach into the more restrictive one by thirty feet.
Okay.
And I measured the drawings, and it's thirty feet, so they must have read that part of our zone.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jane, services?
Okay.
In agreement? Yeah, okay. Richard?
Services, okay.
Okay, so now we can get into the application, unless there's anything else on that.
Thank you.
So, let's have a look here, as far as the application being complete, just run down the checklist here.
James, you don't have a copy of the agenda, do you?
Not a, not a hard copy, no. So we're seeing if it's a name and address of owner, and I will try not to confuse the lot numbers with the soil numbers, so, name and address of the owner is on here, Officer Swords Swansea West LLC, tax map and lot number. Right there. And North Arrow, with graphic scale, I want to take the thirty feet, I know it's different than one of these here, so we've got the graphic scale, name and address of Flaps Perre, it's Fieldstone right there, vicinity sketch, right here, the, and if I missed something, just, oh, I don't have a copy, but I know, I have, there's another copy over there. Name and address of all budding landowners, and we have it in our packet, and I wrote it, so I know it's there. And physical features, use of the land within two hundred feet of the site, and they are Permanent boundary lines in lot area in square feet and acres. Acres and square feet, right there. Shape and size, height, location, use of existing structures on the site, and those that are proposed, check. And location, name, and width of any existing and proposed roads on the property, and there's an existing driveway, and that's what they're going to be using, that's there. Identification of access from the site to public streets, site distances from the access point, curve cuts, proposed changes, if any, and they have an existing curve cut that they're using there, and the site distances is in our packet. Let's see, identification, access point here, just did, location, number of parking and loading spaces, and there's shown landscape plan, we have a new revised landscape plan with this. Location, type and nature of all existing and proposed lighting, and that is in there, I've seen that. Natural features such as water bodies, ledge, outpropping wetlands, and the wetlands are here, back here, though, get into that later. Natural features such as water bodies, oh, I just did that one, sorry. Existing and proposed braids, top graphical contours at five-foot intervals, and let's There are two-foot intervals, which is fine. And the size and accurate location of all existing and proposed water mains, culverts, fire hydrants, and fire ponds, and, I don't have any on there that I recall, no public water over there, sewer system there. Okay, and the means of providing water supply, and they have shown, one of these are two wells on there, I believe, two wells?
Two wells.
Yep, two wells. Surface drainage patterns, there is a drainage plan there, I believe. Grading drainage plan, yeah, right there. And copy of certification by a licensed septic designer, that doesn't apply to them, that the system is, okay, doesn't apply. Location and type of proposed sewage disposal system, yes, they have it located right there. Location of existing and proposed onsite well showing the seven or five-foot well radius, and those two wells are over there. Soil survey data from Cheshire County Soil Survey, do we have that?
And you have to have mine.
Okay, we have that, the updated land sweeping plan, okay. Location of any existing... Location of any existing or proposed easements, deed restrictions and/or covenants. There are a few easements for the drainage part of the property and they are there. And architectural plans, we do have those. Okay? So, everything is on the checklist. Anyone have any questions on that? If not, uh, a motion to accept the application as complete would be in order.
So move.
Motion by Michael York to accept the application as complete. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon Self. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and now we can move on to the public hearing. Um, I will open up the public hearing and Mr. Brandon, Brandon, right, yeah, Mr. Brandon, you make your presentation.
Perfect. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Lake Consultants. Uh, we're here this evening representing all-purpose storage Swansea West LLC with their site plan application to construct a um, new contractor bay facility over tax map parcel fifty-two dash sixteen dash one. As the board may recall, at the last meeting, uh, we did secure an approval for the subdivision um, of the overall property that I have shown on the plan before you, um, this evening. That's the blue highlighted area. Uh, we were successful in obtaining a subdivision approval which breaks off the self-storage, um, building, buildings rather, um, to the south and creates a vacant, um, parcel on the north side that we are looking to, um, construct a contractor-based storage facility on. That new parcel will consist of six point nine five acres of land. Uh, will have frontage along, uh, Base Hill Road to the west. And as you can see on this existing conditions plan, the topography, um, generally slopes from east to west. Excuse me, from west to east, um, to the jurisdictional, uh, wetland area on the, um, east side of the site. That line, the jurisdictional wetland boundary line is highlighted in green. That was, uh, field mapped by our certified soil and wetland scientists. Um, and then we survey located that, um, to depict that on the plans. Further to the west, excuse me, further to the east, there is a, um, tree line and this, the, the majority of the site exists as kind of an open, uh, field area. Taking a look at the, um, site plan that we have before you and we are proposing. Uh, we're proposing to come in off of Base Hill Road utilizing that existing access. We will be making improvements to that access road, making it slightly wider just to accommodate some additional traffic. Um, so that's shown to be improved to twenty-four feet in width. Then as you come into the site and, and, and turn to the left as shown on the plan here, um, you'll see that we're proposing, uh, two buildings, um, as depicted on the plans on the, um, on either side of the access way going in. Each of the buildings is thirty-six thousand square feet in size. Um, there is a loading area on each side of, of the proposed building. So this one here, um, the building on the north side shows it, um, actually, this would be the east side, um, shows the loading area to the south here. And then the other building shows it on the, um, north side there. This is a contractor bay, uh, facility. So there's a number of services, different service businesses that we are anticipating occupying the space. Right now, we're showing in the plan show and in the renderings that we submitted show, um, thirty by sixty individual units. Um, each of those units would have a bay door and a parking space out in front. So one of the questions that we wanna work through with the planning board this evening pertains to, what do we determine, you know, this interior area? Basically, what you have with each unit is a parking space and a loading area because there's a, there's essentially a space in front of doorway. And so I know that, you know, in discussing that with staff, it's, it's somewhat ambiguous in the regulations how, uh, we, we are to interpret that area. Is it a parking space? If it's a parking space, then we would have some internal parking, or excuse me, internal landscaping requirements. If it's a loading area, maybe we don't. Uh, maybe a waiver is appropriate. And so we just wanna have an open dialogue with the board about that because, you know, there's been some changes to the landscaping regulations and we, you know, quite honestly, we're not sure exactly how to interpret that. And I think it's, you know, worthy of a discussion so that we, you know, we handle that appropriately with this, with this plan. Um, as you look at this site, you can see there's, there's actually two access aisles. Um, so there's some circulation that will be allowed for internally. Uh, we provide for an area on the back here, um, for turnaround. Um, there is some parking down the center, which we do have NKAP, uh, landscaped islands on because, um, that is over the, um, um, threshold for, um, triggering the, the landscaping in that particular application. We have situated the, the buildings so that all the activity will be occurring internally. Uh, we do understand that we have some abutting properties that, that are residential in use, even though this is the business district. And we, you know, we tried to create a layout that would be sensitive to, um, those adjacent, you know, properties and, and essentially the buildings would provide, you know, buffering. We do believe we meet all the landscaping requirements along, um, the perimeter with the, the, um, existing and some augmented, um, buffer areas. Taking a look further into the plan set. Sheet four of the plan set shows our, um, grading plan. This project will trigger an alteration of terrain permit. So we're gonna go through a pretty significant review. You know, once we're successful working out some details before the board, uh, we'll make a submission to the Alteration of Terrain Bureau. They, they certainly look at erosion, sedimentation and, and water quality. We've talked about that permit a lot before this board and, and other applications. Um, but what we've done with this site is we've, we've essentially graded it so that there's two low points internally. Um, all of the stormwater, you know, in, in the, uh, project area up here will grade, um, to those low areas. That'll be captured by a closed drainage system and routed to an infiltration, um, chamber system, which will be under the, um, parking area. Um, that chamber system will outlet, um, to an open basin on the north side of the site, located right here. And then ultimately from there, it'll go through an outlet in, 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 in outfall towards the jurisdictional wetland areas. So we're, we're proposing significant, um, stormwater mitigation through this proposal. Uh, we also are proposing a stormwater management area, um, here, just off the end of the access road, if you will. Um, and that's really gonna capture a lot of the existing runoff from that, this, this existing storage facility and offer some stormwater mitigation for, um, a good portion of that existing development that, um, you know, currently doesn't exist. This was built at a time in, in, you know, where it did not really trigger stormwater, uh, management standards and, and presumably at the time the, the town didn't require it either because this is, this whole area essentially just sheet flows off, um, you know, and, and works its way towards those jurisdictional wetland areas to the east. The, um, so this plan's been designed to, you know, to meet alteration of terrain standards. We look forward to eventually, you know, making a submission to them after we work through some, um, details with the board. You know, this evening and, and that maybe a future meeting as well. The next plan that we have is a utility plan on sheet five. And what this essentially shows is, you know, where we're proposing to do, um, some septic, uh, storm and some, uh, water supply. So we have a subsurface, uh, septic system proposed in this corner here. We're also proposing two wells on the site. One will service essentially each building with this layout. Um, those wells have been sized appropriately with the well radiuses based on the anticipated usage of the building, um, as a warehouse and con- and a contractor bay facility. Uh, we are also showing on this plan, you know, where the underground electric would come in. And, uh, we also are, um, depicting on this plan where the, uh, lighting is proposed, which is essentially all building-mounted lights for, uh, this proposal and all of those will be located internally. And you can see on the lighting plan that we show, you know, the profiles for those lights. There will be no, um, light pollution or, or bleed over with, with the lighting design. All of the lights will be full cutoff, full down, or complete downcast, uh, night sky compliant lighting. And we've added the appropriate details, um, for that on the, on the plan. We also have a landscaping plan, uh, with this proposal. We are proposing some landscaping along the, the front of the property, um, on the, uh, north side of the access road. Uh, we do have some, um, landscaping proposed behind the building just to satisfy that, uh, buffering requirement to the adjacent, uh, properties. We do have some landscaping proposed on these end aisles. Um, and then we have landscaping, you know, proposed along the perimeter of, of some of the stormwater management, um, components as we abut properties. Our client does own the property to the east, um, which is, you know, basically of, you know, the, this primarily, um, wetland area. Uh, it's a pretty significant wetland to the, you know, to the east of the site. Um, so we delineated the, what would be the western, uh, boundary of that. As you can see on our plans, all of our plans are certified by the appropriate professionals. I did see in the staff memo that there's some questions about, um, you know, some of, some of that work in the wetlands boundary and I'm happy to talk about that tonight. I did consult with, uh, two of our, uh, wetlands and soil scientists to talk about the delineation of this site. I did also have an opportunity to read through the, um, letter from, I believe it was Southwest Regional Planning Commission, uh, where they touched on some things like traffic and how the traffic from this facility should not have a, you know, negative impact. The roads have capacity. You know, we would, we would certainly agree with, you know, with that statement. Uh, we touched on the stormwater. I think one of the things that they, you know, they recommended in their letter was to make sure that there's adequate stormwater mitigation for this proposal. Certainly through the alteration of terrain permit and, and securing approvals through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Uh, we will be, um, satisfying, um, those requirements. Their standards far exceed any local standards. Um, and this board has, has, uh, certainly relied on, you know, that permit for, you know, projects of this size in the past. It's a very substantial, um, endeavor to, to secure that permit. Other state permits that are required for this, uh, project will be, um, the subsurface, uh, effluent disposal system, so the septic system, uh, which we have, uh, proposed in this location here. And then as part of that permit, they'll also approve the, you know, the well locations because, because of the number that'll be serviced by the wells that will be, it will be community wells. And so that will be addressed with, with our submissions to the state. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'd be happy to maybe touch on. Any questions that the board may have at this time or we can go on to department letters or if you'd like me to proceed?
Any questions that the board has that he just went through right now? You go, Victoria?
Is this a franchise?
It is not a franchise.
It is not. And I'm wondering, is there a way to, um, to, to know the height of the water table and whatever? Concerned about is that the, uh, the water treatment is going into the, like, the north corner, which is already fairly wet. Um, and I just wonder where it's at. If you put that water in the ground and the water table is already really high, where's the water gonna go?
No, that's a great question. So the alteration of terrain permit requires treatment, um, above the water table. So there'll be three, at least three feet of separation, um, in this stormwater chamber system, uh, to the, to the seasonal high water table.
Importing soil.
Yes.
Ways of the level.
Absolutely.
To give you the height.
Yeah, that's correct.
And, and then the other question is, how do you know how to start the septic?
Because you base it, you base it on, um, a number of employees, which is common for this type of a use. And then, then, and the state also does it by square footage. And so the, the state actually reviews and approves, um, the septic designs for facilities like this.
And there can be a leach field associated with that as well?
Oh, yes. Yep, and we've, we've located that, um, in the front corner here. Yes. And so just so you know, I mean, to speak to that treatment just a little bit further, the treatment actually occurs in the chamber system. The, the outfall of the chamber system is just additional volume for metering flow off the site, uh, during large storm events. But that water, that any stormwater coming here would already be treated, um, you know, per alteration of terrain standard. So this basin does not have to be, um, you know, above seasonal high water. In fact, many treatment systems, you know, are anaerobic, um, systems such as a gravel wetland and stuff like that. Um, so we could have designed something like that here, but the state often wants to promote infiltration. And so we decided that the best way to do that was through a chamber system. So this will meet and mitigate both the qualitative and quantitative aspects of all stormwater components.
Chad, one other, just off the wall kind of question. Your, your snow storage area is sitting around on top of your wells. Dude, I mean, we're in the seventy-five foot radius. Okay, and I'm wondering just how much of your treatment or melting the snow is gonna leach into your well? And is that gonna, you know, be a contamination problem or is that something that even to be?
So the, I mean, the state will actually review that, um, with the community water permit, but, um, we're anticipating drilled our teaching wells here. So, um, those will be, because it's a commercial and a, a well that will be sealed to the, um, you know, to the, to the bedrock. Um, and they'll, they'll be, uh, casing, casing the whole way down. Um, so that helps, you know, with that certainly. It's a good question. We have been considering some modifications of the plant, to be, to be completely honest. Uh, we, I had a conversation with, uh, Deputy Chief Matson, the, talking about, uh, fire protection. I think before the meeting started, there was a question raised about fire protection. And we hit, we essentially have two options with fire protection. We can make some adjustments to the buildings or, uh, we have to have, uh, underground cisterns, you know, water building tanks for, um, a sprinkler system. We've done both, you know, uh, actually with this client, we've done both in town. Um, this is the same company that developed the property across from the Cheshire Fairgrounds. Um, at least the climate control self-storage building there was sprinkler and we did tanks, um, the cistern tile style. But those come at a cost. And so one of the, uh, things that I've reviewed with them recently is actually, you know, kind of deleting a, a unit every five units in looking at creating buildings that are under ten thousand square feet. One of the reasons that I have suggested that, and I think we're, we're mov- I think we're moving in that direction, kinda got the word today. Um, which is why I, you know, I really wanna use tonight as getting some feedback. I think we're gonna make some good, good, you know, some good improvements to the planet. Um, feedback primarily on the landscaping and stuff. But, but if we are successful in doing that, um, we will probably take those wells and actually put them in between, um, you know, the uni- the units that more centrally, uh, located so that they won't be, you know, in this location here. And I did bring a copy of a plan of what we're thinking about for that, that I'd be happy to share. I haven't submitted anything, but, uh, like I said, it's, it's kinda been a late development. Uh, just wanna be very transparent about, you know, kinda where we're moving and, and work through these details together.
Can I, can I ask my question in a different way? Ask if it was a franchise. Is this something that you have, have you ever built this kind of project before? Or are you familiar with other projects like this throughout the state?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We've, I mean, we've done a lot of these types of projects and I have done probably a half dozen of these with this, with this, uh, client.
Okay, so it's not, I said, is it a franchise? It actually is, is a.
It's a business model.
It's a business model. And that's why in this photograph, it's, it's identified as all-purpose industrial?
That's correct.
Oh.
Yeah, they, they just purchased, uh, Westmoreland Industrial Park. They're doing more of these there. Um, we did a big facility with them in Summersworth, New Hampshire, um, Lunandary, New Hampshire. We've been doing garden, in garden mass. We're doing some, we're, we've, we've done a lot of these types. We've been doing garden, in garden mass, we're doing some, we're, we've, we've done a lot of these types of facilities with them and with other ones. But so they have a management group that handles the tenants and, you know, the leasing and makes sure that, you know, there's appropriate things stored there. And I understand that, you know, Swansea has a multi-tenant, you know, regulation where typically, you know, people come back before the board. And and we may talk with staff about how we can, you know, maybe work on getting the common group. They they have this facility in so many places, they they have a pretty good idea what services to anticipate. So we may want to get, you know, a group of them approved so that they can fit people up sooner. But that's something that we'll work on after hearing, you know, some of that that dialogue tonight.
It it seems like an ideal use for the industrial park. And I'm wondering why that hasn't been considered? That's, you know, that's why, that's exactly where we have our industrial park.
Well, this is zoned appropriate for it, and it's it's really a light, it'd be considered in a lot of communities. A really light industrial use because it's services. So, you know, most of the vehicles that would be utilizing this would be vans, trucks, maybe a single axel box truck. It's not your typical industrial. But but we've seen these uses kind of on the peripheral of industrial areas, certainly.
But there'll be fabrication inside the units, most likely.
There could be some small fabrication, but, I mean, it depends. I mean, we have, in some other facilities like this, we'll see like a commercial glazing company will fabricate frames for, you know, screens or or aluminum frames for small storefronts, stuff like that. You have the typical, you know, plumbing HVAC contractors, electric electricians. We'll even see roofing companies often. And, you know, how I've explained this in the recently and what we've seen is a, because of the supply and demand issues, a lot of contractors are purchasing supplies when clients sign a contract so that they can actually provide that service for the price that they estimated. And so they store more product in on, you know, in a facility. And so, you know, contractors that you wouldn't think typically would need storage now do if their if their work model is that way. And we're seeing, you know, people trend in that direction a little bit more right now.
So the, you mentioned about the fire protection that you may say skip the unit. That would be a clear span, like thirty feet between the buildings, that how you got it figured?
That's correct. I'm just going to cut that thing up if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. So this is what the layout would look like if we, you know, if we if we decided to break the units down so that we didn't need to sprinkle. So basically, you have to be under ten thousand square feet in order to not have us sprinkling. And then there's, you know, would be restricted where you couldn't have certain uses in there. I mean, uses ultimately have to get approved by, you know, the fire department and and staff. And so assuming that you have your typical, you know, service uses that, you know, don't have, you know, they're not storing really bulk, any bulk hazardous materials or anything like that, you would not, you know, need to be sprinkled if this is the way. And that's again, per a, you know, quick review with with the fire department and some conversations with staff. So I think we're, I think we're going to be, you know, basically confirmed today that we are going to be moving in this direction. So that's going to improve some impervious cover. We'll be able to take these wells that are situated on this side. We'll probably put them, you know, somewhat in between the buildings in one area. And then, you know, we won't, we'll probably just honestly leave the stormwater system the way it is and just let that be, you know, overdesigned to some some capacity.
That doesn't affect the well that all the stormwater system has been being closed, or, you know, the stormwater system itself is is something that is, doesn't affect what radius.
Right. It is, it is allowable, you know, and it it's hard to see on here, but the the radius barely gets into that. It's actually just outside of that area of the of the chamber system. Because we, again, this is, this is undevelopable land here, so the radius is allowed to extend onto that property. Even in in the other part of that is my client owns it, so he could always grant an easement if he if it was needed.
And so the loading is off there. I think there's one to the right of the building to the east, I guess. Yeah, one to the left, loading to the west.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering about turning, you know, a tractor trailer coming in backing into that one on the east side there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Looks a little tight there.
No, it's a great question. So we have designed both of these locations to work for a tractor trailer truck. But basically, they would, you know, they would come in, you know, make a turn into here, and then they would back up there. And they actually, you know, the the trail, the the truck and the trailer would stop at about this location. So it would not impede traffic from entering or exiting the site. And then this one's obviously kind of off the end, so not a big deal.
The other one, I was wondering.
Yeah. It is. And that's why, you know, one might ask, and why isn't this landscape island out here? And then why isn't that one further out this way? It's because of those turn-in movements for that trailer truck. We had to, you know, we had to locate those appropriately so that we're not impeding that that turning movement.
Just a second. See if the board has any questions before I open it to the public here. We're still, the board have any more questions on the plan here?
We serve the right to ask, which is later.
Oh, we, I'm kidding, but I mean, the board goes first and then the public goes after.
There's the, the public in the zone. You know, the one to the basically east, not on there. If you eliminated that last dock or storage area, would that take it, take it out of conflict loading, so you wouldn't have to go for a variance or anything of that nature? Or is it not?
Yeah, we don't have to go for a variance because, and I think Mr. Chairman touched on that before the public hearing. Yours are off of off of that zone boundary. This building is within that thirty feet. So there's no issue with the with the zone boundary line, to my knowledge. And I thought that that was touched on earlier in the meeting. So I don't believe we need any zoning relief, and that's, that's why we haven't made any changes, you know, to that layout.
Now, I had measured it. It is exactly thirty feet.
Must not have been paying attention.
Oh, no, no, I mean, I measured it for my own. You tended to over, I didn't like side of the link.
No, this this plan did not change the location of anything. In fact, I didn't even move the wells. All I did is delete, you know, a unit. So the the buildings are thirty feet apart. You know, here, I think you have to be twenty feet or more in order for it to be considered a fire separation. And so thirty was, you know, just so happened that worked. You know, we're not going to move them to twenty, or, you know, we, or at least we don't plan on it. It really works out well for the layout of the loading areas and the parking spaces because each one of these units has a bay door. And I think one of the members, you know, correctly stated, you know, how do we know somebody's not going to rent a couple days? Or they could. Many, this really is, I mean, the partitions will be there, but you can put a doorway between the partitions, or you could even take the partition down if we had a user that, you know, wanted more storage room or, you know, you know, something like that. And so the structural, the buildings are designed where the outside walls are the are where the structural steel is and what's needed. So you can take a partition down. But again, that would get approved by, the way the current format is, we'd be back before the board talking about, you know, the user and, you know, hopefully that is appropriate.
Time is a multi-tenant coming in if they wanted to take it down.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're not carrying walls in, right?
They're not.
The interior walls are carrying.
And the spaces that this iteration has between the buildings, would those always be vacant? Or would people be storing, you know, a truck in there?
These would be vacant. I mean, the way we we have it now.
Nothing would go into that space?
Nothing would go into that space, yeah. They certainly could. And I think that's, it's a great question, and it's really part of maybe a good transitioning segment. I mean, I know that there's some rationale that would say, hey, this is a parking lot. And, you know, somebody might park in the loading area in their fire, it's a parking lot. And then we we do work in a lot of communities, and some communities exempt loading areas from parking calculations. And so, but we're willing, I mean, if the board took a hard line on that's a parking lot, we're willing to calculate that landscaping and put it somewhere else on site. I just don't think it's productive to put it in this space here and and create an obstruction, you know, along an area that needs to be maintained. It's not a retail space where people are going to be, you know, coming to visit. But I think it makes sense to take that landscaping and maybe, you know, put it, you know, put it here or put some more down at the entrance, or we're willing to work with the board and and everybody on something like that. I just think that dialogue is. Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Board members, any other questions? We're still having questions. I'm just going to open it up to the public because, okay, ma'am, was it you had? Could you come up to the mic, please? Just, we have to have you. Sorry, but we're going to have you up at the mic for for people online.
Sit on.
I think so. Just state your name for us and.
My name is Linda Goslin. I live at one forty-one Basile Road.
What was your first name, ma'am?
Linda.
Linda Goslin?
I am in a butter. And I was just going to ask the question. This gentleman said that the vehicles going in and out of there would be basically vans and box trucks. And then we're all of a sudden talking about trailer trucks. There aren't even supposed to be through trucks on our road. Both ends of the road say no through trucks. And we have a lot of traffic already. We don't need a lot more trucks going up and down the road. So I just thought I heard him say there was going to be vans and that type of thing.
He did.
And now it's trailer trucks.
But, yeah, it was also designed with a loading dock in there and that's.
For trailer trucks.
Could come in there, right. The trailer truck presumably wouldn't be going through, but it would be coming to.
They're going to act exactly go from one end and then make sure they go back out the other end? I live on that road. I know that doesn't happen.
Well, if I were driving a trailer, I want to go back out the same way towards your tent. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Fish. I live at two seventy-two Basile Road in Keene. Our land butts the field. Also, sir, could you tell me? We had a barbed wire fence on our property, which has been cut down and gone now. And the two pins that were in the field that outlined our property have been removed. Did your company do that when you surveyed it? I'm asking you. You're the surveyor.
Are you okay with the answer to that, Mr. Chairman?
You can answer. He's not, I don't think he's a surveyor.
No, I'm a civil engineer, but I can, I own the company, so I can speak to.
I figured you could.
What we do and what we don't do. Our company would never remove fencing or or any physical monuments on any site. This this property has had a ALTA survey completed on it with with background research. And our survey group has, you know, reviewed that and and completed a licensed survey. So the boundary on the plan that we're depicting is based on all of that research and and our our location of physical evidence in the field.
So you didn't remove our our fence or our pins, your company? Okay. I believe that the planning board has the ability to require additional buffers. And the trees that are there now, which they're planning on using as buffers are our wooded area and all of our neighbors' wooded area, and they're not adequate. When the leaves fall, six months out of the year, we'll have to look at this. And also the sound, it's not going to block any sound, even if it's in the inside of those buildings. We can hear the dogs barking at the Humane Society, which is a mile away. And these are going to be in our backyard, and you're saying we're not going to hear it? There needs to be some kind of privacy fence that's high enough to block the sound of these businesses and these cars and this traffic that's going to be going through. And the trees are not going to do that. It's quite obvious the trees will not do that. We also, you are putting the snow in the northern corner, which had a well there, but may be moved. That corner abuts our property. When we had.
Whoops.
When we had our pool put in, in that back lawn, we had to raise the land five feet because we hit water. Our lower lawn is wet all the time when we have rain. It is saturated. So now they're going to put snow in that corner that they've built up their property. It's going to be higher than that. That snow is now going to run into our property and the Goslins' property, and it will saturate our backyards. And I'm wondering what is going to be done about that? It's not going to flow down when the property is raised. It is going to go to the lowest part, which is our properties.
By ordinance, they are not allowed to disperse any more water that coming off that property that that came off before they developed. So whatever is coming off now is one thing, but they've got snow stored there. They've got a bed and a he can move to that anyways. But they've got to set it up so that all that snowmelt and any runoff from this property is contained on the property itself.
And do you have a system for that?
Yes, we have designed the stormwater. Again, we're going to be infiltrating a good portion of our runoff, you know, here internally. This outfall area, this basin area here actually captures excess runoff from larger design storms. And then it 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 meters the flow. Just want to make sure that you. And then it meters the flow now to the, actually to the east. This is the outlet of this this basin area here. So no flow will be going, you know, onto your.
Onto the side.
Yeah.
And and as Mr. Chairman stated, and as is required also by the Alteration of Terrain Bureau, who will be reviewing the project, we have to match existing flows on the property. So we are not allowed to increase the rate of flow, you know, during the design storms that we're modeling.
Also, how tall are the buildings going to be?
I believe they're twenty-five feet in height.
Twenty-five feet in height. Okay, so.
Twenty-eight? Yeah, twenty-eight, I'm sorry.
With these units, and now you're going to have separations, which is nice for the fire protection. What is going to, if you don't put up a fence, what is going to protect our properties and our children from people coming through there right onto our properties? There, you can walk by a tree. I have, I mean, anyone who can't walk by a tree. A fence really needs to be there so that people cannot go onto our properties. There's one home in our neighborhood that have children, and their yard is so close. It's so sad. You can see it on the plan. It's very, very close. And now you're going to have strangers going into these places. And what's to protect the children in that in that home? Okay, and I know our neighbors, we have grandchildren and everything that come over and are in those backyards and in the pools. And now you've got twenty-plus. those backyards and in the pools and now you've got 20-plus strangers in that backyard. And when you get all of the other people coming in, that will be even more. So there's gonna be constant noise in our backyard six days a week. In a field that all we used to see are bear and deer and animals. And now we're gonna have constant noise. The property values obviously are going to decrease increasingly. They're going to go in the toilet, no one's gonna wanna buy a home that is abutted up to this. Sorry, my same question as the other board member. Why, when we have so many industrial properties that are open, are you considering allowing this to go into a neighborhood? I mean, would you really wanna live with that behind your house? I have a question also. There's a real concern that the two wells, you're putting in two big wells, everyone from Farmstead Commons to the end of Swansea Road, Basil Road on the Swansea end, we all have wells. There's only so much water to go around. And now you're putting in huge wells that are gonna accommodate, I don't know if they're gonna have individual bathrooms or one big giant bathroom for women and men or now it's coed, so, you know, where you've got numerous toilets and sinks or what. But there's only so much water that is to go around and now, how's this gonna affect our wells? Has anyone done a study on this? Is it going to affect our wells? When you're drawing that kind of water, artesian wells especially, draw a lot of water. And it's now gonna be drawn off of our wells. So I'm wondering if anyone's even taken that into consideration? It's going to affect our wells and I don't know how it's going to affect it, whether it's gonna be the quality or the amount of water or anything. If you review the traffic, the study from Southwest Region Planning Commission, you'll see that between 2,000 and 343 cars to 4,157 cars travel that street on a daily basis. And now you wanna add 200 more workers and then trucks into the ravines and everything else. As my neighbor said, Keene doesn't allow the tractor-trailer trucks, any two trucks to go through. I've met a tractor-trailer truck on that skinny low bridge. I wanna tell you, I almost had a heart attack because that bridge barely allows two cars to go through. And there's another bridge down on the Swansea side that really is not built for that kind of traffic. Has anyone considered that? This is a neighborhood and we're talking 2,000 to 4,000 cars a day. And now you wanna add more to it. It's not built for that kind of traffic. Our Keene side, on a yearly basis, on a regular basis, is patching and patching and patching and patching. And every year after winter, there are so many potholes that you could lose a tire in it. If any of you travel that road, you know how bad it is. And it's not gonna get better. And now you're putting even more traffic on it. And as far as the fire system, you've discussed that. So let's see, my next note. Why is it being allowed for them to build in a floodplain area, a wetland area and an aquifer area? There you're now saying that they have, they can build on a wetland 30 feet in. Well, from my understanding, from talking to some planning people in another community, when you build on a wetland, what you do is you build it up. When you build it up and you add more dirt and stuff to the top of it, the wetland disappears. It is no longer a wetland because they have made it so it's not a wetland. What's the 30-foot?
That was encroachment with another zone.
With another zone? And what was the zone?
Zone was rural agricultural as opposed to business. The business zone allows a certain use. And if it's one of your questions, why cannot be built there? It's an allowable use right there.
Okay, and the corner of it is not on a wetland? Cause it looks like it is on the.
There was wetland encroachment into the property and we'll, he hasn't discussed that yet, but we're gonna get into that. You're confusing the encroachment of the rural agricultural zone into the business zone.
Thank you, thank you. Is there going to be any detrimental effect on the wetlands from the leach fields? That I don't know.
And again, they're taking care of, the leach fields actually are over here, wetland is over there, you know, they're on the sides of the property.
And so the leach field, leach over.
State is getting control of that. Anyway, we're gonna get the state approval.
Okay. And is there going to be, and this is probably a question for you, sir, is there going to be anyone controlling what businesses are allowed to go into those units? Is it gonna be regu, any regulations on it?
Man, the planning board does that.
You'll do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so when they go to rent to someone, you'll be notified and you can say yes, they can go in or no, they can't go in? They're not gonna just rent whoever has the money?
It's by plan approval and you, if you're in order, you'll be notified.
Okay. Has any research been done considering the devastation to the animal habitats, the wetlands, the floodplains displacing all of the animals? We have bear come up through our yards, we have deer come up, we have wild turkeys, we have bunnies, my bunnies are my favorite. But all of this will no longer be able to come up through our yards because of this. And I'm no expert on any of these areas and I'm sure that's why the residents of Swansea elected all of you to the board. And I'm sure that they're assuming that you're looking out and protecting the citizens' well-being and the best interest in them.
We are, the criteria we use is zoning ordinance and the site plan review regulations. You know, so we're, we adhere to those, we're. We just went through our site plan review regulations recently and we've updated them, but those are the guidelines that guide how the business goes into that piece of property. And the zoning ordinance is guiding what can go onto that piece of property. So all of that is in, and the wildlife part of it is not a criteria in the site plan review regulations.
Okay, so they don't matter, okay. That is, that's my question. We are asking, the neighbors in that neighborhood who live there are asking that you, in this case, will put the quality of our lives as the best thing that's most important rather than the money that you will receive from the rent of this property. And I hope that you do have your residents' best interest in the quality of their lives because when you put this in, the quality of all of our lives are going to deteriorate. Thank you.
And yep, you won't. We do look into that, but again, we go by guidelines which makes it fair. The site plan review regulations and zoning ordinance, the planning board has to buy by as much as the developer has to buy by. That's what keeps it there. You don't, in separate roles for different people. So that's what we generally do when we're looking at a site plan like this. And again, I'll just mention that it's an allowable use on that piece of property, it's own business there. And other things tend to win that piece of property, this just happens to be proposed for this right now, but other things could go in there. And see, and the traffic part of it, yeah, Southwest Regional did look at that traffic part and they said that the traffic looked like to them it was fine for, you know, it's not going to put more, too much more, I guess, because I don't remember the exact numbers, I can read it. On that road. Well, they, I think, let's see, what, they said that a two-lane road was good for like 3,000 some odd, I forget what it was, cars, I think it might have been first hour they said the two hundred, I don't know about that. I don't know how many cars go on that road. They did their own traffic studies. We have the Southwest Letter there and they did their own traffic studies in several different years and they looked at it, in my opinion, they looked at it pretty well and did a pretty good assessment of the traffic right there. Oh, it's the same. Yeah, I do have a copy of that, that came from.
Yeah, so if you don't mind us.
Go right ahead.
So we asked, and what I did was I reached out to Southwest, because it was Regional Impact Vote, asking, and that's a formal report of what they determined was appropriate traffic for the region. So they did traffic, they did regional economy, services and regional natural resources because that's one of their roles as, and within the Regional Impact Vote. So they discussed all those pieces and it's located online as well. But I think what Scott was trying to say here is that during that discussion, or during that report, they said that this is what they anticipated for traffic based off the study that you had said. And ultimately they determined that the amount of traffic that is supposed to be probably gonna be generated from this project will not reach the threshold of the concerned.
And they did mention that, they said a two-lane highway has a typical section of a two-lane highway has a maximum capacity, a maximum capacity of 3,200 vehicles per hour. No, but what they're saying, they were looking at it and they know, they looked at that road, you know, we didn't tell them anything about it. They said applying a rudimentary planning level vehicle to capacity measure the existing peak hour traffic and the amount of traffic that the new development would contribute to the road are both minimal and traffic should continue to flow relatively easily on Basil Road even during the Dallas. That was their assessment.
Is there any security fence around that?
There is not a security fence around the contractor base facility. Would not be.
There's no plan to put one in?
There will be surveillance, there will be surveillance cameras on site, that's typically how they monitor, but they would not typically, most contractor base facilities are not fenced in.
No, I'm just.
There's no outdoor storage allowed, so everybody's goods are essentially stored inside in a secure location. You can see, you know, there's really no place for outdoor storage. It's typically something that would be discouraged, maybe for security reasons, but I'm guessing more for aesthetics.
I'm just trying to think of a way of pacifying the objection of not having one.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we meet all the regulations and all the criteria. I can talk to the, I mean, I can talk to our client about, you know, potentially doing something, but again, the orientation of the buildings, there's gonna be no activity on the backside of the building. So the buildings themselves provide better buffering than any fence. They're, you know, I think the, the walls of the building on the backside, if I'm not mistaken, are like 18 feet in height. You know, that's, that's a very large structure that would buffer, you know, between the activity area and an adjacent area. And again, it's all, you know, technically business zone, but we are still being mindful in trying to, you know, create something that would fit in. You know, we don't technically, we didn't technically have to orientate it this way. I just think that makes sense in this application, which is why we did it. But I will, I will talk to the, you know, the clients, maybe we try to, you know, put fencing in between the gaps on the backside of the, you know, the buildings, you know, something along those lines, but I, I can't imagine justifying fencing the entire site.
Sir? Can I look at this closer?
Look at that, yeah, go right up, look at it.
So your company can't justify protecting the people? Anyone can walk down your parking lot and into our backwoods and into any of our neighbors' properties. So your security is for your tenants, not for the people abutting that property? We have children there, who's to say that some sex offender isn't gonna start a business there and sees a child playing out on a swing and the next thing you know, that child's gone? Your company should have the responsibility of protecting the people that he is exposing us to. We need protection from anyone that's working in that unit. And a fence would do that. One that one can't be climbed over.
Do you have, sir, do you have a question on that?
Yeah, I have a question about the trucks entering and leaving. My name is Neil Fish, I'm in the butter. I live in the Keene side.
I'm saying Neil Fish. Thank you.
Okay, tractor trailers coming here, right? You said these are a loading zone on the end?
Yeah, that, that's one loading.
No tractor trailers in here? They're gonna get there, right? So the tractor trailers are coming down through?
Yeah, just let him answer the question. Just, just state your question and then, Mr..
Okay. Tractor trailers do not back into these buildings to load, not load. Only at the end. When they get down to this end, where do they go?
Let him answer.
Do you mind if I answer?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
So a tractor trailer truck that's entering the site would come down the aisle, would pull up into this opening here, back into this zone, would offload whatever contents onto a platform here, and then it would pull out and exit the property that way. And the site's been designed to handle that traffic. They can either use a pallet jack or they would be a small forklift that would bring supplies to the units. You know, some businesses have a small forklift in a facility like this to offload added trucks and stuff. And so, you know, occasionally people, people will get a delivery, things are getting shipped across country, they will, they will land on a trailer, or, excuse me, a larger trailer truck. And so it's important for a facility like this to be designed to accommodate that traffic. If not, then, I mean, we can see it all over the place, right?
Just explain, like, they're all ground-level units.
They're all ground-level units, yes.
You need a way to have a tail, not a tailgate, but a delivery or tractor-trailer truck for the loading dock, that's all it's for.
Otherwise, you would have a tractor-trailer truck stopping and impeding units and impeding traffic, it becomes a safety issue. And so the site's been designed to make sure that doesn't happen. I mean, typically, they have surveillance cameras all around the site so that they can see each unit, they can see down the lanes, they can see, you know, the loading areas and they, you know, they, they store video, I don't know how long they store, I can find out if you wanna know.
No arguing, just if you have an argument, make it with me and I'll tell him.
I'm saying by the time the surveillance is seeing somebody, it's already too late.
But you really think there're gonna be a lot of people walking around out there and going into your back?
They were suggesting 200 people are gonna work there.
200 people working.
Because that bridge barely allows two cars to go through. And there's another bridge down on the Swansea side that really is not built for that kind of traffic. Has anyone considered that? This is a neighborhood and we're talking 2,000 to 4,000 cars a day. And now you wanna add more to it. It's not built for that kind of traffic. Our Keene side, on a yearly basis, on a regular basis, is patching and patching and patching and patching. And every year after winter, there are so many potholes that you could lose a tire in it. If any of you travel that road, you know how bad it is. And it's not gonna get better. And now you're putting even more traffic on it. And as far as the fire system, you've discussed that. So let's see, my next note. Why is it being allowed for them to build in a floodplain area, a wetland area and an aquifer area? There you're now saying that they have, they can build on a wetland 30 feet in. Well, from my understanding, from talking to some planning people in another community, when you build on a wetland, what you do is you build it up. When you build it up and you add more dirt and stuff to the top of it, the wetland disappears. It is no longer a wetland because they have made it so it's not a wetland. What's the 30-foot?
That was encroachment with another zone.
With another zone? And what was the zone?
Zone was rural agricultural as opposed to business. The business zone allows a certain use. And if it's one of your questions, why cannot be built there? It's an allowable use right there.
Okay, and the corner of it is not on a wetland? Cause it looks like it is on the.
There was wetland encroachment into the property and we'll, he hasn't discussed. There was wetland encroachment into the property, and we haven't discussed that yet, but we're going to get into that. You're confusing the encroachment of the rural agricultural zone into the business zone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there going to be any detrimental effect on the wetlands from the leach fields? That I don't know.
And again, they're taking care of, the leach fields actually are over here, the wetland is over there, you know, they're on the sides of the property.
And so the leach field, weren't leach over?
State is in control of that anyway, when they get the state approval.
Okay. In, is there going to be, and this is probably a question for you, sir, is there going to be anyone controlling what businesses are allowed to go into those units? Is it going to be regu, any regulations on that?
The planning board does that.
You'll do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so when they go to rent to someone, you'll be notified, and you can say, yes, they can go in, or no, they can't go in? They're not going to just rent whoever has the money?
It's a site plan approval, and you, if you're in the butter, you'll be notified as well.
Okay. Has any research been done considering the devastation to the animal habitats, the wetlands, the floodplains displacing all of the animals? We have bear come up through our yards, we have deer come up, we have wild turkeys, we have bunnies, my bunnies are my favorite. But all of this will no longer be able to come up through our yards because of this. And I'm no expert on any of these areas, and I'm sure that's why the residents of Swansea elected all of you to the board. And I'm sure that they're assuming that you're looking out and protecting the citizens' well-being and the best interest in them.
We aren't, the criteria we use is zoning ordinance and the site plan review regulations. You know, so we're, we adhere to those, we're, we make, I mean, we just went through our site plan review regulations recently and revamped them, updated them, but those are the guidelines that guide how the business goes into that piece of property. And the zoning ordinance is, is guiding what can go onto that piece of property. So all that is in, in the wildlife part of it is not a criteria in the site plan review regulations.
Okay, so they don't matter? Okay. That is, that's my question. We are asking, the neighbors in that neighborhood who live there are asking that you, in this case, will put the quality of our lives as the best thing that's most important, rather than the money that you will receive from the rent of this property. And I hope that you do have your residents' best interest and the quality of their lives, because when you put this in, the quality of all of our lives are going to deteriorate. Thank you.
And yep, you're welcome. We do look into that, but again, we go by guidelines, which makes it fair. The site plan review regulations and zoning ordinance, the planning board has to abide by as much as the developer has to abide by. That's what keeps it fair. You don't give separate rules for different people. So that's what we generally do when we're looking at a site plan like this. Again, I'll just mention that it's an allowable use of that piece of property, it's own business there, and other things can go in that piece of property. This happens to be proposed for this right now, but other things could go in there. And seeing the traffic part of it, yeah, Southwest Regional did look at that traffic part, and they said that the traffic looked like to them it was fine, or, you know, it was not going to put more, too much more, I guess, because I don't remember the exact numbers. On that road.
You get a danger of just one thousand cars going through every day?
Well, they, I think, see, when, they said that a two-lane road was good for like three thousand some odd, I forget what it was, cars, I think it might have been four thousand, said the two on the road, I don't know about that. I don't know how many cars go on that road. They did their own traffic studies.
Yeah.
We have the Southwest letter there, and they did their own traffic studies in several different years. They looked at it, in my opinion, they looked at it pretty well, and did a pretty good assessment of the traffic right there.
They did it, they did it in June, and it showed, and I don't remember the details.
Oh, it's the same. Yeah, I do have a copy of that, where that came from.
Yeah, so, if you'll mind us speaking.
Go right ahead.
So we asked, and what I did was I reached out to Southwest, because it was Regional Impact, but it was the last meeting. And that's a formal report of what they determined was appropriate traffic for the region. So they did traffic, they did regional economy, regional services, regional natural resources, because that's one of their roles as, within the Regional Impact though. So they discussed all those pieces, it was in the, the package is located online as well. What I think what Scott was trying to say here is that during that discussion, or during that report, they said that this is what they anticipated for traffic based off the study that you had said, and ultimately they determined that the amount of traffic that is supposed to be probably going to be generated from this project will not reach the threshold where they're concerned.
And they did mention that, they said a two-lane highway has a typical section of a two-lane highway has a maximum capacity, a maximum capacity of thirty-two hundred vehicles per hour. But, no, but what they're saying, they were looking at it, and they know, they looked at that road, you know, we didn't tell them anything about it. They said applying a rudimentary planning level vehicle to capacity measure the existing peak hour traffic and the amount of traffic that the new development would contribute to the road are both minimal, and traffic should continue to flow relatively easily on Base Hill Road even during the Dallas. That was their assessment.
Sir? Is there any security fence in the offing around that?
There is not a security fence around the contractor bay facility. Would not be.
There's no plan to put one in?
There will be surveillance, there will be surveillance cameras onsite, that's typically how they monitor, but they would not typically, most contractor bay facilities are not fenced in.
No, I'm just...
There's no outdoor storage allowed, so everybody's goods are essentially stored inside in a secure location. You can see, you know, there's really no place for outdoor storage. It's typically something that would be discouraged, maybe for security reasons, but I'm guessing more for aesthetics.
I'm just trying to think of a way of pacifying the objection of not having one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, you know, we meet all the regulations and all the criteria. I can talk to the, I mean, I can talk to our client about, you know, potentially doing something, but again, the orientation of the buildings, there's going to be no activity on the backside of the building. So the buildings themselves provide better buffering than any fence. They're, you know, I think the, the walls of the building on the backside, if I'm not mistaken, are like eighteen feet in height. You know, that's, that's a very large structure that would buffer, you know, between the activity area and an adjacent area. And again, it's all, you know, technically business zone, but we are still being mindful in trying to, you know, create something that would fit in. You know, we don't technically, we didn't technically have to orientate it this way. I just think that makes sense in this application, which is why we did it. But I will, I will talk to the, you know, the clients, maybe we try to, you know, put fencing in between the gaps on the backside of the, you know, the buildings, you know, something along those lines, but I, I can't imagine justifying fencing the entire site. That would be a huge expense.
Sir?
Can I look at this closer?
Look at that, yeah, go right up, look at it.
So your company can't justify protecting the people. Anyone can walk down your parking lot and into our backwoods and into any of our neighbors' properties. So your security is for your tenants, not for the people abutting that property. We have children there. Who's to say that some sex offender isn't going to start a business there and sees a child playing out on a swing and the next thing you know, that child's gone? Your company should have the responsibility of protecting the people that he is exposing us to. We need protection from anyone that's working in that unit. And a fence would do that. One that one can't be climbed over.
Do you have, sir, do you have a question on that?
Yeah, I have a question about the trucks entering and leaving. My name is Neil Fish. I'm in the butter. I live in the Keene side.
I'm saying Neil Fish.
Thank you.
Okay. Tractor trailers coming here. You said these are loading zones?
Yeah, that's one loading.
No tractor trailers in here?
Yes.
They're going to get there, correct? So the tractor trailers are coming down?
Yeah, just let him answer the question. Just, just state your question and then, Mr. Brown.
Tractor trailers do not back into these buildings to load, not load. Only at the end. When they get down to this end, where they go?
Let him answer.
Do you mind if I answer?
Yeah, just answer.
So a tractor trailer truck that's entering the site would come down the aisle, would pull up into this opening here, back into this zone, would offload whatever contents onto a platform here, and then it would pull out and exit the property that way. And the site's been designed to handle that traffic.
What stage? Whatever they got, blah, blah, blah.
They can either use a pallet jack, or they would be a small forklift that would bring supplies to the units. You know, some businesses have a small forklift in a facility like this to offload out of trucks and stuff. And so, you know, occasionally people, people will get a delivery, things are getting shipped across country, they will, they will land on a trailer, or, excuse me, a larger trailer truck. And so it's important for a facility like this to be designed to accommodate that traffic. If not, then, I mean, we can see it all over the place, right?
Just explain that they're all ground-level units.
They're all ground-level units, yes.
You need a way to have a tailgate, I know, a tailgate for a delivery, a tractor trailer truck to load it up. That's all it's for.
Otherwise, you would have a tractor trailer truck stopping and impeding units and impeding traffic. It becomes a safety issue, and so the site's been designed to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay, so surveillance, you see, like on this side? Over here and over here?
I mean, typically, they have surveillance cameras all around the site, so they can see each unit, they can see down the lanes, they can see, you know, the loading areas, and they, you know, they, they store video, I don't know how long they store, I can find out if you want.
Oh, that doesn't tell somebody they've been there. It's too late.
No arguing, just if you have an argument, make it with me and I'll tell him.
I'm saying by the time the surveillance is seeing somebody, it's already too late.
But you really think there are going to be a lot of people walking around out there and going into your...
They were suggesting two hundred people are going to work there.
Of two hundred people working out of there, all those two hundred people I doubt was there all the time.
I didn't say all the time. Two hundred people going through there, off and on.
Well, have you had anybody from the other storage units walking in your backyards? Is that why you're...
You have the whole city in them.
In what, the storage units down?
Yes.
So have they been in your backyard from there? Is that why you're...
No, they don't do it yet.
No.
We had children in our backwoods. Now, my husband and I at that time were golfers, and we would hit golf balls out into our woods. And we found out they were children out there. We could have killed one of those children. We then also found these children near our pool. And I don't want to come home and find someone drowned in my pool because they climbed over the chain link fence that Keene made us put up. So neighbors are nosy. You're not telling me that some guy who wants a butt is going to go and smoke in front of his unit, he's going to go around the back of that unit and have his butt.
Yeah, you may, you may find somebody doing that, you may not, you know.
I know, and you may not, but if you do, if this could be around his back, it's too late. Like my husband said, it's too late. If a child's out there playing and someone grabs it, it's too late by the time you see it on the camera. You've got to put up a privacy fence that is high enough so people cannot come out of those units and come into our yards.
Or you could consider putting a fence on your yard.
Well, I've already, I've already had to consider hiring a new surveyor and lawyer to prove that they're taking part in our property. How many thousands am I going to have to spend to be able to feel safe in my own home when I lived there for forty-three years and never had to worry about it? Because someone wants to make more money and have a monopoly so they can pack up the rents for all these people who rent them. They're buying all over the country so they can have a monopoly. And you're buying into it.
Jesse Rounds, can you tell us the city of Keene?
Jesse Rounds.
First of all, I want to say thank you so much for sending out the determination of regional impact.
Jesse, you're from the city of Keene?
Yeah. We were able to review it, and we really appreciate the opportunity to comment, and our one main concern is the traffic. SWRC does a great job, but they did a rudimentary study. We would encourage a more in-depth study of the traffic impacts. Base Hill Road is a small road. It already sees a lot of traffic. I happened to drive down today to come here, and so, just, we would encourage that. That's it. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And, sir?
Here, next to me, we have Mr. Howard.
Could you come up to the mic?
My name is Joe Hoppick, and I represent Mr. Howard, who lives at 114 Basie. Hoppick, H-O-P-K-O-S-K, sorry. Just wondering when it would be an opportunity to speak about her position on this.
A better position, you said?
On her position, speak about, speak onto it.
Yeah, we're, that's what we're doing.
All right, can I get my stuff and give you...
Sorry, I got...
Thank you. As I mentioned, I represent Mr. Howard of 114 Basie Hill Road. I'm a lawyer in Keene. I've been on the Keene ZBA for about ten years, and I have to respectfully disagree with your conclusion on zoning definitions. Now, you're relying on business district uses permitted subsection F, BF, retail sales kind of services, correct?
That's correct.
You're suggesting that this use is a services use. Here's why it is not. You have an application that says the proposed use of the multi-tenant services facility...
No, just, this is actually, the application that we received said services was the proposed use.
Right. In the notices, it says multi-tenant services facility. The presenter a moment ago spoke to a new construction-based facility. You have members of this board telling you it looks like an industrial park. I'm going to submit to you that it's more like a distribution center. You're going to have twenty or so units that are going to be rented out by contractor and contract and site business, plumbers, electricians, air conditioning people, heating people, and people who provide those kind of services to the construction industry. Now, what you're going to have in there will be, take an electrician, for example. He's sent, electrician is storing electrical materials in the unit. And they have a guy there, working there, he's a dispatcher, so to speak. A van goes out to a job in the area, the van calls in, "I'm out of a, a part. Can you bring it out to me?" The guy at the, in, in this proposed site gets in a van, takes the part out to him so the electrician doesn't have to spend time driving back and forth. He gets the part delivered to him. That's the kind of things that are going to go on in there. And they're going to manage big jobs from this little space in these units where they're going to store materials and they're going to distribute them to job sites. That is not a services use. The other thing I would point out is in, in the ordinance, the ordinance defines warehousing, the storing goods. That's what this looks like. Your zoning ordinance, also in the business uses district, has a special exception for self-storage. This looks more like self-storage than it does anything else, and that requires a special exception. What you're doing is, is you're layering a distribution function, somebody mentioned a fabrication activity, and storage, and calling it services. That's inappropriate. Now, what you have here is a multi-use use that is not permitted in the district, in the business district. At best, this use requires a special exception, at best. And I think it's inappropriate as a matter of... And I think it's inappropriate as matter of law for this board to be interpreting the zoning ordinance when that's the purview of the ZBA. You, you made a conscious decision and you, you agreed consensus, at least by consensus, that this is a service use. As I just said, it is not. Even in the business district, wholesale uses and self-storage uses require special exceptions. You're not even going to put this use towards that test. That's a mistake, in my view. All-purpose industrial, I heard that phrase go on, mentioned before, that's what this is. It's services that will support industrial uses, construction, heavy construction, electrical, things of that nature. And they're going to be running goods and services in and out of there with their personnel. Some of these personnel will be waiting in these areas for a call to a job. And that is not services. That is not somebody running a top electrical shop or a small auto repair shop. That's also services. The degree of, of the usage here is much more, it's much higher than a services entity would suggest. And as I mentioned before, your ordinance requires a special exception for uses such as self-storage. And that, and this is in the middle of warehousing and self-storage. It's more than that, actually. It's commercial activity, to, on top of warehousing and on top of self-storage. So how do you justify commercial activity as a service? In my opinion, you cannot. And I think you should send this to the planning board for its opinion on what the use, the proposed use is here. It's a mistake to call this a service use. And I can give you my two cents worth on the legal argument of it. When you see a phrase such as retail sales, comma, services, semicolon, normally and under, under recognized rules of statutory construction, which apply to zoning ordinances, the word retail modifies both sales and services. When you have things like sales and services being similar things, like a, like an appliance store that sells refrigerators, the retail modifies both sales and services. That's the proper construction. You do not have retail services here. You're not, this is not open to the public where somebody walks in and says, "Can I buy a, a bucket of joint compound or something?" They're not doing that there. They're just, they're sending them out, distributing these things to various job sites. That's the proper construction here. And the fact that you have self-storage and warehousing separately treated in the same ordinance justifies that interpretation. This is not retail sales, this is a commercial use.
Okay, you, you have your opinion and you just said that the ZBA's job is to interpret our zoning ordinance. Not you, you're interpreting our zoning.
I'm giving you an argument for why you shouldn't say that.
You are, but you could say that for the ZBA, because?
But you're not going there. You don't, you, you've already interpreted, you've done their job.
If the planning board has, or if someone finds that the planning board erred in their interpretation of the zoning ordinance, then they appeals to the ZBA. And that's where you can make that argument.
And, Mr. Chairman, may I just say too that it's been my experience that the town of Swansea has interpreted this, similar uses throughout the town as a service. We've got a number of site plans approved with, whether it was a landscaping service or whatever, that falls under services and this board has acted in that fashion for years.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
Just because you're wrong all the time doesn't mean you're right now.
Same applies to you.
Yes, I, I agree. But you have a good position and that's our legal argument. Thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
Hi, Sherry Domena, Conservation Commission. You all have our memos in front of you and, and you may have seen the minutes from our meetings. And we definitely have concerns about the wetness of the property and whether the wetland boundary was properly delineated. I wanted to just sort of reiterate our concerns about lighting tonight and ask you again, is there to be lighting all the way around the buildings? Or just inside the door?
The lighting plan that we've submitted only has lighting on the inside.
Okay.
So it would only face internally and I, and I will say to the wetlands point, the gentleman that flagged the wetlands on this property has 25 years' experience. He's a soil scientist and wetland scientist. And if you have concerns about the wetland mapping, we would offer to this board that we would be willing to do a site walk so that we could educate, you know, the board. And if the Conservation Commission would like to be there, how wetlands are actually mapped. It's a three criteria system. It's not based on vegetation. It's not based on standing water, especially this year. Or, you know, we've had plenty of that, unfortunately. It's based on hydrology, vegetation, and soils. And you have to have, you have to hold the certification to do that in this state. It's not an easy, you know, license to have. So we don't take, you know, testing wetland boundaries lightly, but we would offer, you know, to do a site walk and to have a, you know, you know, an educational forum of, you know, this is why it is or it isn't a wetland. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I understand that's tricky. It was clear though that the water table's real close to the surface and that the ability of this property to absorb water for the rest of the neighborhood could possibly be important. And I just imagined the amount of runoff that would come off of this in a large storm would end up probably in Mary Fish's backyard. You know, overflowing the system, so that, that was a concern that we had. Anywho, I wanted to ask about the lighting. Thank you for answering that question. Being that the neighbors are uphill from the property and are sort of looking down into it and that it is so close to the wetland, I am a little bit concerned about having all-night lights on there all the time. I feel like it would, if it's not in anybody's eyes because they are pointing downward, that's helpful, but it does still create an ambient glow that wasn't there before. And it creates a, an ambient glow in the wetland adjacent as well, which does affect both people and breeding animals. So we would ask that perhaps that that lighting be considered to be motion sensitive. I think that would, that would help a lot.
I'd, I'd be happy to have that conversation with our client, Mr. Chairman.
So to get back to the wetlands. Would you be up then for a site walk? Are you still looking, are you board still looking?
I'd go on a site walk and, and learn more about it. I'm always up for learning about it. I have, you know, been to the site and spent a lot of time walking around it, but I would like to go with your wetland scientist. If that's what the board wants to do, certainly.
Okay.
It's, it's hard for me to understand though why, you know, when you, when you go down there and you see there's a fence and immediately adjacent to the fence are six-foot wetland plants. I feel like the boundary is basically due to mowing. But I understand what you're saying. There are several criteria that have to be met to call it an actual wetland, but the fact remains, it's quite wet. At least this year.
Site walk would be in order then to see what the board says about it.
Yeah.
It's like, well, it would be, you know, board, as well as our board and the soil scientists.
Yeah. I think, I think our board would be up for that, certainly.
So as far as the lights go, how about if they were on timers rather than motion sense? Because motion sensitive, they're on and off, on and off.
Well, if something's there, yeah. Timers in terms of like have them on till midnight or?
Whatever happens to be, I don't know, whatever is best for what you're talking about.
Well, I think, I mean, whatever is best is to have darkness be darkness for people and animals. It's, it's better for everybody's mental health and, and, you know, biology. And there are studies about that, but because you're so close to people. I've lived next to a building like this. I used to live on a federal fish hatchery and we managed to get all the outside lights turned off because it was very disturbing to live next to, and we were right on the lake. So this is a similar situation where you've got near neighbors who are not shielded in the wintertime because of the, the hardwood trees.
We could look at timers, Mr. Chairman, but I, I just want to have a conversation with my client because I think we're going to have to have a, you know, a small number of lights just for security purposes, but we can, we can work into that.
Okay, then yeah.
Thank you.
You'll relook at that, where the lighting is and what it's going to be.
Thank you.
Jay Moore. I wasn't, I wasn't expecting to, to talk tonight, but Chad raised a question I want to speak to. I've had several conversations with this board on other projects about the landscaping and parking areas. And Chad suggested that you all consider this and the definitions of what a parking area is and how much landscaping needs to be in it. And I, I really want to follow up on that and say that I think the board needs to recognize that the site plan regulations are there to prevent large expanses of impervious surface. And that that means that parking areas need to be defined as the areas where vehicles park and travel to get into the parking area and that the landscaping percentages should be calculated off of that. I've, I've had folks in, in various other sites talk about limiting the parking area to just the area of the spaces. I've had people talk about, in this, in this particular case, saying it's not convenient to put the landscaping in the middle because it'll, it'll interfere with the traffic flow, et cetera, et cetera. And that may be true, but I think the board needs to come to grips with this. I'm not going to tell you what to do. I just think that the point of the regulation is to improve the way in which the properties look in terms of providing landscaping to break up the impervious surface covers. And that also helps with runoff and other things involved. And I know that, that Chad and his company have gone over backwards at times to make this happen. And I know they're receptive to doing what they can do, but I think the board needs to come to grips with how to define it so that you don't run into these issues all the time. And the other comment I'd make is that, as a member of the Conservation Commission, I was part of the site walk out here. And I echo what Sherry said, but I also want to point out that when you go on your site walk with us or without us, you should look at how narrow Base Hill Road is. That's one of the considerations, I think, that, that the residents were talking about in terms of traffic. It's not a real developed road. So it's, it's hard to say what the traffic study says in terms of cars going. If you have a large truck and a small car coming in the same way, do you, do you have issues? It, it is a narrow road, so I, I just want you to put that in your minds as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So let's talk about parking.
Let's. So, and, and I appreciate the comments. Funny part is, is since the last time you stepped at the podium, the landscaping regulation's changed. And now it is per parking space.
Yeah.
And so, but it doesn't, doesn't call out loading areas. It doesn't make any distinction between loading areas. And so when you look at a use, you know, like this, I mean, the, and I don't disagree, landscaping was great. And we're not suggesting that, you know, depending on how the board interprets it, that would take any landscaping away. In fact, I think, you know, with the potential change of, you know, making the buildings smaller, we have the ability to do, you know, some more landscaping as was suggested by one of the board members. You know, we, you know, we could do a couple different things to improve the landscaping plan, but our interpretation of the regulation was that the rows in front of the buildings did not necessarily trigger the internal landscaping lines because we think that it's a, it's more of a loading area. They're going to be vacant the more, majority of the time. Most people don't park in front of their bay doors. And if they do, it's likely at the end of the day, not during business operations where you're going to have to contemplate moving it, you know, rather than working out of that space. Will it happen in, in some cases, I'm sure. But, and so, you know, Julius and, and I had this conversation that, you know, we, I think, and I don't want to speak for him. I think we both agree that it's a good discussion to have with the board because I do think there needs to be an understanding of, you know, how do we go about it for this project so that we know how do we take care of the next one? And, and, you know, ultimately, we are charged with trying to meet the regulations. That's our goal, you know, with all, all of these projects. I do think there has to be, in, in my opinion, professional opinion, some difference or some concession with use when you think about loading spaces and you think about, you know, this type of a, a property. You know, does, does it benefit from having internalized? If the board decides that it does, then, then we'll ask. It's really just a, just a discussion. Our proposal is that, and what we, what we are hoping the board would come to terms with is that, you know, maybe it doesn't trigger the requirement technically because loading areas are not defined in the landscaping zone or landscaping section. And so it really should not count towards the landscaping calculation. But we would suggest, you know, rather than maybe debating that in this case, we just run the numbers and plant some additional landscaping, you know, throughout the site as appropriate. But we, we definitely want to have some dialogue and maybe I'm off base in the interpretation. But that's, that's, that's why we wanted to talk about it tonight.
One of the senses that I've been able to really reaction was that, I think, maybe misunderstanding here, but like they are under the impression that these storage units are going to be banned twice, three, four, seven, where I can be on job site, you know, say, Joe, I need reserve to stay and they totally call whatever. Is that going to be a situation we're thinking of called?
Well, I think first of all that that happens with my business. You know, on occasion I'll call the office and say, hey, I forgot to bring prints to Swansea. Can you please print some plans out and run them to Swansea? So I don't think that constitutes a distribution center. Distribution centers are mainly truck, trailer truck based, based on all the high bay factory, industrial, actual industrial uses that we do. That's the normal distribution. This would be, you know, I mean, as I stated, you know, we're, we're probably going to have more discussion about the, the typical users are. You know, a plumber, an electrician, you know, maybe an, an insulation company, you know, a roofing company. We've seen, you know, floor installation companies go into places like this, countertop companies where, you know, they, they have a small office often, like a 10 by 10 office in the front. There is a bathroom in each unit. You know, somebody could come here to look at a color. You know, this is what we'd like to have, you know, type of stuff. If they didn't want somebody to go to their house and, you know, meet them there, it depends. I can't speak for everybody's business plan, but this is not a industrial use. It's, it's definitely, all of these companies, in my opinion, are service-type companies. And so, but I'm not sure how that relates to landscaping.
It doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we're having now breaks on each side of the buildings. Could we not have in the, in the center where you have the parking that corresponding, without interfering with backing into loading docks or et cetera?
You're talking like here and here?
Yeah, in, down that middle aisle, which you, which you're showing, I believe, is parking spaces, correct?
But we do have one on the end of each.
I understand that.
Yes.
What I'm saying to maybe help with the overall appearance and satisfy things that we, if we broke that continuous line, put in trees.
In the middle?
Corresponding, corresponding with the brakes in the building.
Okay.
East and west.
So you're suggesting like do a bump up here, here, and here?
It doesn't have to be over the, to the building itself, but I'm just saying down that center aisle, making a berm, not a berm, but an island where you're putting in a, a tree or two. They're supposed to, what, the 30 feet wide between the buildings? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not explaining.
I, I got, I understand what you're saying now. So you're, the parking spaces that are in line with the brakes.
Correct.
Do an island there.
Yes.
I mean, if that's what the board would like, we can, we can certainly, we, we could look at that.
So I, I have, I did a, I walked the perimeter of the site back in August. And it seems to me like, as far as I'm concerned, the primary landscaping concerns I have to do with protecting the neighbors to, in there, yeah, because the buildings will be right on top of that house. And also at the end where the water treatment area is.
Here?
Up, no, up, up, that will, that will boundary there, yeah. Because, and we've heard from neighbors that when the leaves fall off the trees, it's, you know, there will be nothing to separate those proper areas from, from this. So.
So, so you're suggesting take whatever the calculation is or whatever and, and, you know, bolster the landscaping on the ground?
Well, we've been talking about parking. I'm just saying, my primary concern is very, because we are butting up against residential uses. It's, it's, the buildings will be very close and there will be a lot of spill.
So you're suggesting evergreens?
Evergreens, yeah, yeah. And, and in some, you know, solid fencing works too. Although the backs of the buildings do are, but at the end here, there, there are.
So there's a, there's a berm on the backside of this pavement, so.
That is depressing, right?
Yeah. And on the backside, there's a. And on the backside, there's a berm. I mean, we could look at maybe a fence along that, along that edge.
Yeah. Let's ask a couple, just quick knock landscaping questions. Um, you said that each unit can have a bathroom?
Yes.
Okay. And is there going to be a property manager on site?
So they have a, they have an office, their property management office is in heat.
Okay. So, but not on site all day? And, and to, I think what Steve was also talking about is are there hours of use? So can, will this facility be available and open 24/7?
I mean, it's, that's a great question. I, I, I would be happy to, you know, to come back to you. I think their lease.
That's sort of how it fits into the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think their lease does spell out, you know, hours of operation, um, just to be sensitive, but I'll, I'll, I'll get back on that.
Yeah. And, and, and somebody talked about tractor trailer trucks not being permitted on Basheel Road, is that true?
Yes.
Through traffic.
Through traffic.
Through traffic.
Yeah. But they can, they can come from Route 10 to this side.
Okay.
There's Hills Construction over there.
Correct.
And there's the BMW or BWM, uh, they have a lot of trucks.
Okay.
To those at that point.
Okay. And then you said, um, that the back walls of those buildings will be about 18 foot tall. And in the photographs, there, it looks like the roofs are flat. Is that what you propose?
Yeah, they typically, I mean, they do flat and slope roof systems. Um, this is a more modern, you know, um, looking building. So they would have, um, I do, I do believe this one was.
So you're, you're proposing to build it as is pictured there, like?
Yeah. This is, this is actually I think pitched, but it's, it's very flat pitch.
Okay. Like that.
Yeah.
And then one more thing, you talked about, um, planning with more purpose, is that something that is? Each, is there like a shared forklift that is part of the, being a tenant in this facility?
They're typically is not a shared forklift because there's not, there's not a dedicated unit for that.
Okay.
Um, at the moment, so it would just be, you know, if a business, you know, has one, uh, sometimes, you know, they'll, you know, they'll, they'll have one in their unit.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Eric Tarrant, uh, 131 Basheel Road.
I'm sorry?
Eric Tarrant.
Tarrant?
T A R R A N T. Um, so just to go back to what, I'm sorry, man, I'm not sure what her name is, but, um, she was talking about some of the landscaping and putting evergreens and stuff in. If you can look at that, that building is basically from my house, 30 yards from my back door. And they're proposing to put in just regular trees at this point. Now, from 30 yards, now with the lighting, I do like the idea of having literally lights that come on with motion. I mean, I can sit on my back porch and I'm going to be looking at that roof with the light coming in my porch? I don't know. I mean, I have no idea. So I'm just saying, I think at least do something about that. I mean, it's literally 30 yards off my back door.
So it looks like the lighting is to be inside of the building.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully.
It will be whatever the planning board decides or whatever.
Okay. Okay.
But. But yeah, the rear of the building is going to be about 18 feet tall and wide.
Right. Right, okay. So whatever it might be, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's basically like putting this place right behind my house. And looking that way and that way is all I'm trying to get at. I mean, I just hope you guys are taking into consideration all of it.
We do, but we have to take into consideration that it's allowed.
I understand that. No, I get it. I understand the process. I'm just, I'm just, you know, it's there. It's not your backyard, it's mine.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Mary Fish again, um, 272 Basheel Road. Sir, if you're considering putting a fence in on the north end where all of our woods are, I think all of us neighbors would much rather prefer you put the fence behind our homes instead of where the woods are. No one's going to care if someone goes into the woods down by the river. We do care if someone comes onto our property. So if they're considering allowing a fence and putting it in, we'd much rather it be right up against the corner like of our property where our lawn is, and then across the whole area where all of the homes are. That's where we want the protection is from.
Talking about the lots right here. It's locked in.
It would be like right here, um, the issue well thing.
Is this where the old well was? Okay. Where am I?
This is a depressed area here in the range here.
Okay.
Sloping down there.
Where are the homes?
The homes are right here.
Okay.
Basheel Road right here.
Okay.
And the lots are here.
Okay. So if you're, would put a fence like here on this corner where they're going to dump the snow, put a fence here and across that way. So the fence is protecting the homes, taking away maybe some of the light, some of the view of these buildings and keeping people out of our backyards.
Would, would it be working the same way? Yeah, yeah, you're saying a fence like that in that corner.
Yeah, because he was saying maybe put a fence there. Well, this is all woods. It's all of our woods and the city's woods.
Let's just say the layout is like this. Not just like homes or everybody here. So let's say the layout is like this, like they're showing with the spaces here.
Yeah.
And they put in a corner fence like that, would it be okay just to put a fence there, there and there? Because the rest of the building is, is there and nobody can get through it. Well, you know, instead of a fence all the way along there, if this were fenced, that were fenced, and that were fenced, and the corner were fenced.
Yeah, that, that would be much better than just trees because like I said, people walk through trees. If there's a fence, yeah, if there's a fence that they cannot climb there and over here, then that would at least keep people from coming around the building into, like he said, his home is like right here. I mean, it, it's so close and it's just, you know, for safety purposes, if they at least put a fence there in the corner and, yeah, that would protect.
So is that something you would consider? I'll, I will review that with our client, yeah.
Well, this is my second time here on Deborah Sprague. I've been on Basheel Road for over 48 years. And this is the first time I'm seeing this picture.
What was your name, Deborah?
Deborah Sprague.
Sprague, Sprague, thank you. Go ahead.
The road is dangerous. It is really, really dangerous. And if you think trucks don't go through, come to my house at dusk. The big double, uh, trailers full of cars and they don't pay attention to the sign. I mean, Swansea and used to have one that said no through trucks, but I think the snow pile took it down and hasn't been replaced.
I don't doubt any of you that the trucks go through there, that travel through there and aren't supposed to. But, but listen, if, if this building was not put up at all, they're still going through there regardless of that building.
All right. We don't want another roundabout at this thing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Make a motion that we continue this, uh, implementation through our next meeting in all fairness to FWW. They have theirs to serve this evening also.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would be, I would be okay with that as long as we could schedule a site walk. If we're going to, you know, do that and then maybe we can discuss the landscaping. I mean, I would like to come back to our next plan. It's not seconded yet. And, and if you would hold off on that, I would like to get a couple of other things ironed out for the next meeting too. Thank you. On parking. Okay, would you hold off on that motion? But I, I agree with you. Let's just get a few things that they, he goes back to the client, they get that stuff, they can see them. All I want to get, and that's mainly between the board here, and we're back to parking. So this is a services billing, what they're going in, and services. So how do we say how many parking spaces have to be there? We haven't hit on that at all. They have, let's see, they have 51 spaces in the center, correct? And they have one space on each building. So that's a total of, let me see, uh, it's 91 spaces.
It's going to be changed because they're changing this, the type of building. It's not a continuous building.
Three, uh, it's back six, right? Yes.
Oh, yeah, right.
So be 80, 85, so 91 now, but so be 85 parking spaces.
And, and they do what, what Richard was suggesting were to take out the one that aligns in the middle.
Oh, in the center. That'd be another three. So be 82. So we, we would meet the, Mr. Chairman, sorry. So. Am I hearing the board correctly that we should consider, we should, I mean, basically, consider the areas in front of the loading or the doors as a parking space for the calculation? I would consider it, but we aren't doing that calculation or their calculation. I thought you were talking about land state and calculation there? Yes. I just want to get the boards nailed down as to how many parking spaces we're going to require for this use. In our parking ordinance, you know, we don't specifically cover services, okay? So they have, uh, you know, we have like one family, two family, two spaces per unit. We have multi-family dwelling units, uh, 1.5. But let's get down to businesses. Retail sales, we've got one space per 250 square feet. Uh, retail sales, furniture, appliance, motor vehicle sales, we've got one space per 500 square feet. Is that it? Uh, let's see, personal services, one space, 250 square feet. Nursing home, automobile repair shop. So it varies from warehousing is 1,000 square feet, one space per 1,000 square feet, uh, to 250 square feet per space. So it goes 250 to 500 to 1,000. So what the planning board needs to do is decide on this many parking spaces, if that's the space that goes through there before we can get into landscaping.
I don't see how we can without our information, okay?
Like what, like what?
Specifically, you have, you, you're conscious of, or you have built other similar facilities, right? So can you give us a range of what actually, how many spaces are vacant? You know, what the vacancy rate is for the spaces that you've built? We, we've never approved something like this before. I, you know, we don't have anything in our regulations for.
Right, and.
And without, we, we're only guessing, we're pulling it out of.
And I appreciate you saying that because that's the difficulty with, with parking. Is it's a function of experience and use in buildings.
Yeah.
And so it, you know, if, if you pull a number that's arbitrary, we're probably going to have a conversation about that because realistically, you know, business, like an electrician that might have one or two company vehicles. Now you can park one inside, but you, you know, you'd have to have a certain, and then you have a, you know, a couple of employees. So generally, we look at, you know, three to four spaces per unit to be safe. Um, typically is how, you know, we, we look at that. If somebody comes and, you know, visits the site, if you get a salesman coming to, you know, visit the site, if you have, you know, an employee, and the employees kind of displace the company vehicles often. So you, you know, you, you park a car, you get in a van, you know, you leave. But that's how the sites operate. I mean, we can, we can create a calculation like that. We really didn't do that here because there wasn't, uh, as you said, Mr. Chairman, it isn't actually a formula for this. But we're happy, I'm happy to, you know, bring back to the next meeting and then balance the landscaping from there, if that makes sense. Well, we do have to nail that down before you nail on landscaping because. Yeah, they quarrel. So that's how we're getting to that now. Okay. So any comments from the board on that? You know, again, getting back to it, it looks like they're going to have, uh, what, just say 82, I think. If it's configured like that, it looks like there will be 82 spaces.
And how many units?
And let's see, the unit will be one, two, three units. So it's. They got six units, right? It's 34 units, I think. 34 units, yeah, okay.
So this, this breakup of the buildings, what is the total square footage going to be?
It would be 62,000, I believe, is the new total.
So 62,000 and we need one space per thousand, did you say?
Oh, I'm saying that's for warehousing. You know, we, we can go from one space for 250 feet. Uh, let's see, this is square feet we're talking about. That's for retail sale, which this is not going to be. But I'm just giving that as an example. One space per 250 square feet. Uh, let's see, like a furniture appliance and that, that'd be one space per 500 square feet. And for warehousing, we have one space for 1,000 square feet. So it's somewhere in between that this is going to be. So if the board decides that the 82 parking spaces are enough for that facility, then, then that's what we go by and we continue.
It needs two and a half, basically, two and a half spaces per unit is what it comes at.
And that would be, that would be adequate because they could park a vehicle inside if they had to. I mean, that's, that, that is, that would be adequate.
And, and it would surprise, I would be really surprised if people use that real estate for parking inside. Is that really a use that?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Most, a lot of these, in fact, a lot of electricians and plumbers, they do that for security reasons. Because a lot of their tools and equipment are, and they also do it because of winter, so they can show up.
The spaces are all heated, right? The whole?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the, you know, what, what are the guests is having no place to put a car or being, right? So there is, you know, if there's any street parking. What's worse than making that? There's too many vehicles in here and no place.
Well, that would impact, that would impact your ability to lease the space. I mean, I think nobody's, if you don't have the, the appropriate amount of space, then it ultimately impacts your ability to market that as.
Yeah.
You know, rentable space.
But we can certainly, there's no space on Basheel Road.
No. No, they're not going to do that on Basheel Road. Steve, you got something to say?
You don't have an answer to the question, but what percentage is going to be storage? What percentage is going to be retail? And if we're going to make up a note, shouldn't it be at least based on what the use is going to?
And like you said, we don't have an answer to that.
I don't, I don't.
Right, there probably isn't going to be any retail in there. Um, it's probably going to be business. So it comes down to the better judgment of the board too, or two and a half spaces adequate or something like that. And if it isn't adequate, like he said, it'll, they won't be able to lease these places if there aren't parking spaces there. So on the site, there are no places where you could actually add parking at a later date, correct? That's correct, yeah, this is. So the overflow parking may go in storage area where that can be gated off separately. That's gated in that actually, this, this will have a gate. It will, okay. Yeah. All right.
What do we do with, what I think we do, that wasn't here then, when market test was built? They had a certain amount that is retail, square footage says retail, and a certain amount that is storage.
Well, we knew what that was going to be because it was planned. This you don't know, multi-tenant can change all the time. You know, we can get your typical electrician in there that has two vehicles and one employee, you know, so it's just two people. Or you might have a bigger company, say, maybe like any plumbing and heating that has 12 vehicles or 10 vehicles. You know what I mean? We don't know what's going to go in there. But that can be decided as a planning board issue as well. You know, if, if they've got two and a half parking spaces allotted for each unit, and we had a multi-tenant guy come in here that has five employees that are going to be there all the time, then there's a problem on the planning board side, you know, proving it. So that's, that's a way to regulate it as well. It's not going to fit, it's not going to fit unless they rent two spaces, something like that. Yep.
Will we or should we need, um, separate areas, should we test it?
Um, we do because it's, it's keeping with what we do. We do that now. To be fair to all the other multi-tenant in town, we will have to see every tenant that's going to be there come in front of the board. So we'd be able to know how many people are going to be working. It's, there's definitely that ability, but my recommendation would be this is, this is designed based on experience. I mean, we're designing a facility that we believe is functioning. If it doesn't function, that's a detriment on our design, you know, on our relationship with our client. And there really isn't in, and, you know, a requirement in your regulations. It's up to the board. But I think that, you know, what I would suggest is, you know, we've, we've come up with this with reason. We're not looking to build more than we need because there's a cost there. And we certainly don't want to build any less than what we're anticipating because then you can't lease the space. So this design that we've put forward, um, I would request, Mr. Chairman, that we carry this forward and we'll do the landscaping calculation based on this plan. And if the board wants to see that area internal, then we'll, we'll just design it. What area internal? Meaning the, the per parking space calculation. And so we would, the only question is, is do we count the, in my opinion, the only real question here in order for us to do that calculation is are we counting the loading area or not? Yeah. I don't think we're counting the loading area. There's one parking space for each unit. We should, should count that one probably, but not the loading area at all. But, yeah, I would, I would say that we give it a try at the, I guess, what does it say? 82, yeah, two and a half per unit, 82 spaces. And, uh, And, uh, if it doesn't work out, then we'll know it doesn't work out. But we'll allow on the cycling review, so shall we do that? Just a second, shall we do that? Uh, and, and in, in, uh, relating, regards to moving forward, I think we should probably should take that and let them design out for that eighty-two spaces there and whatever else we decide that they're going back to the client for. And when you come back, you had a question on this?
Yeah, I just was curious, will you be able to bring out the parking?
Um, for definitely, there could be if somebody's working out of town or, you know, staying over. Somebody's vehicle could stay there.
Do they have service spots to be there?
There could be, yes, yeah.
I would think there would be, especially inside if there, if there's room for one inside, I'll say that service room's going to be inside, but if they aren't, I would think it would be.
Excuse me, the proposal that they gave said there could be up to what, two hundred employees? So that obviously there are nowhere near two hundred parking spots, so just that was on the proposal.
Yeah, and I read, I read that too. And maybe a few lessons, they've taken a few units out, but it's still going to be right up there on, on their employees there.
Yeah.
But the thing is that the way it's designed, by it looks designed, most of those employees are not going to be working there. It's not like a manufacturing plant where they're all going to be there. So what do we want from the, yeah, okay, we want the, uh, to calculate the interior parking, correct? Or landscaping for the parking. Uh, what else were you going back for? Traffic, uh, we're looking at traffic too. The city of T was talking about traffic and there's been a lot of traffic up there.
I'll have a traffic study done.
Traffic study done, okay. What else would be helpful if you had figures from other units like that? They could put in what the traffic study is one thing, but other figures. Um, we also need to schedule if we're going to have a site walk with the conservation commission. And decide that on a date for that.
Was he going to ask about the minutes?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, hours of operation. I mean, there's, there was a number of notes about asks for sure.
Okay, and you've got them all?
Yes, yes.
Sure that you have them all.
And I'll be, I'll be reviewing the minutes too.
Okay, then, there we go.
I know, pages.
Hours of operation, you're going to check that too, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Uh, sidewalk, what's a good date for a sidewalk? Anything for you? Your soil scientist is going to be there.
Yeah, we, I mean, this, this weekend.
You wouldn't suggest it's weekend?
I mean, preferably not weekend days, possibly.
During the week?
During the week would be better.
Yes, please, who else you can't make it during the week, I know that. Okay, then, then let's see if we can nail down a date for a site.
I'm happy to do it.
Before, yeah, what we do is EBA, go to the sidewalk and say five, oh, and then, then six.
Let's have a separate sidewalk. And you're saying during the day, uh, weekend?
Yeah, I mean, we're flexible, but just at a courtesy from my employees if we can not work on the weekends.
Oh, yeah. So let's see, next week, let's take the middle of next week sometime. The weather's supposed to be good. Hurricane is out of the way.
Correctly by then, yeah.
You want to say Wednesday? Let's say one, Wednesday at noon, or one o'clock, two o'clock, good afternoon sometime? Are you going to be down here anytime next week anyway?
I generally work out of the keen office.
Okay, so you're here all the time, so it doesn't matter. So- When, Wednesday at, uh, one o'clock work?
Check to bring the sandwich.
I don't know. What, what is the excellent date? It's the twentieth, it was September, one o'clock. And we will meet down there at the storage facility there, correct? Everyone? Okay, then that's, that's when the site visit will, uh-
We're doing two and a half spaces.
We are, yeah. And we're going to let them do the calculations for the landscape and all that to that eighty-two. It's going to work out to eighty-two, I think we thought, but whatever works out too. That's what they're going to calculate, back to the drawings later with that. Anything else we need to have them?
They will be notified, Chair, conservation, Chair?
Uh, they will be notified, yeah. Julius will take care of that. Yeah, if, want to or not want to, it's, it's a meeting of the board, so it's have to be taken at some point. If we're not, if we're not free, okay, if you're free, they make it great. Ordinated that way, thank you. Okay, so Richard, would like to make your motion then that we enable this matter or actually continue this public hearing.
Make the motion to continue this hearing to our next scheduled meeting.
Meeting?
Yes, next scheduled meeting.
Yeah, it is, okay. So the motion is to continue the public hearing until our next meeting, which is September twenty-eighth here at six P M. It was taken in by Mark Michael, okay? Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take your break, okay? Yeah, we're going to take a, a five or a few minutes and five minutes recess or along to the web. Yeah, okay. Testing, testing? Testing one, testing two. Testing, testing one. Testing, testing one. Testing, testing one. Testing one, testing two.
These chairs is restaurant.
That's something quite interesting.
Can you take a look at the kind of gear? They allow storage. So being, something like, it's that use.
Hate to have that guy as my lawyer. You know, that- Maybe you should have. Is it in your notebook somewhere hiding underneath? I got a regular pen instead of Sharpie.
Send it there anyways, just, yeah, just anything. Maybe I'll lose that. Oh, I found it right there. It's in my notebook, all right. So this is the new landscape?
Oh, cool.
Right here, right?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, all right.
They got four copies.
I'll share it.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back in order. And our next item up here is, uh, item number two, which is a continued hearing with T F Warren regarding the S W Web Company. And we have updated landscaping plans here, I see. We're all set.
Matt, Matt Ruth here for the T F Warren. So the board had asked us to, uh, address the landscaping, uh, making the adjustment to, uh, the spacing of the trees along the building, in front of the building to forty feet as opposed to the standard thirty. We have done that. Uh, we have also done some adjustments to the cultivars on two of the, two of the trees and changed those out to ones that are at a life expectancy of approximately fifty years. We have also additionally added the ornamental grasses, uh, along the retention pond berm, uh, which you folks had asked us to do. Um, those particular grasses are typically three to four feet high. And then when they get their feathery plumes, they should be roughly seven feet tall. And again, that, that berm is roughly, I believe, three to four feet tall as proposed currently. In addition, you asked us to take a look at, uh, the traffic. Uh, we've since done that and looked at, uh, retail use. And as you can see, the, the trip generation is, um, still rather minimal. Uh, in the morning peak, we're looking at thirty-two trips total. That would be, uh, twenty-one in, eleven out. And in the P M, we're looking at forty trip, forty-three trips total with eighteen in and twenty-four out. Um, we have received, obviously, our D O T driveway permit. I did have discussion with Frank from the district. He didn't have any concerns because we did not hit the peak one hundred trips in the, the, in the peak hours, either morning or evening, which would have tripped us into obviously a traffic study. He didn't see any problem as far as, uh, this use on, on the off-ramp thirty-two. And with that, I'll leave it to any questions the board has.
Thank you. Let's see, any questions from the board on that layout there? And those grasses, uh, are they annual or perennial?
Perennial, they come back every year, yeah.
Okay, so you're on to a resupply.
And there is, there is a script there, I believe, on some of the trees. Once we adjusted, I think we have twenty-four shown for the prunus. And actually, it's twenty-eight totals we'll be out now. So we'll, uh, make a note of that and fix that.
Now, I believe Victoria has some-
Yeah, I do. I've lost track of where the dumpster is.
Sure.
I can gladly point it up. The dumpster is located, uh, right here.
So it's in the, the loading area?
Correct, between the loading dock and there's a, a bay door, yep.
And there's no screening around that?
Uh, none proposed at this time, no.
So, um, in reviewing our site plan meetings, Greg, I was, I feel that we have overlooked the, uh, it's, it's general standard number eleven, which is all outdoor storage areas and loading areas shall be located or screened to prevent visibility from public roads, parking areas, or neighboring properties. And, uh, I've provided board members with some photographs of what we can expect to see at, uh, in this storage yard. And, um, I ran some calculations this morning and as far as I can tell, the storage and loading area is twice the size of the proposed building. So it's basically, it's, it's ninety-one thousand, six hundred square feet. So it's my belief that the loading area and storage area has vastly greater impact on the community and on people who are driving by on Route thirty-two. So I know that you have made, you have indicated some, um, some screening along the, let's just call it the bottom side, the Route thirty-two side of the storage yard. However, if you add up the total perimeter, as our regulations require, you have screened twenty-four percent of the perimeter of the outdoor storage area, leaving three quarters of that storage area not screened with plants that are, um, evergreen, okay? So whether it- Okay, so whether it's half the year, most of the screening that you have, that you show will be leafless and therefore will not provide any screening. So if we consider ourselves only with the screening to prevent visibility from the public road, which is the Route thirty-two side, those two sides, the application provides for year-round screening of almost forty percent of the perimeter and loading area. And that screening is basically a scattering of slow-growing spruce trees and arborvitae trees. The board has a site plan with yellow to indicate the location of the evergreen trees, which are here, 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 and here. And all the rest of the plantings that are shown here will drop their leaves for half the year. The grasses also will go dormant and will shrink down. So I've showed, I provided a photograph of a typical cherry tree, which is at the church here in Swansea, that shows how you can see through those trees, and those are the ones that are indicated along the street, as we just are requiring. But those trees will all drop their leaves for half the year. And the other, the contrast are these big thick bushes, evergreen bushes, that are at the corner of the church thyme that you can't see through. And so my conclusion is that if we are to have this application comply with our standard that all outdoor storage areas and loading areas shall be located or screened to prevent visibility from public roads, we'll forget about parking areas and neighboring properties, at the minimum, there needs to be a solid screening needs to be provided to prevent visibility. There are numerous ways to do that. One way is evergreen trees that do not shed their leaves for half the year. The other way is a physical, you know, fence of some sort or another, and I'm sure there are other ways too. So, that's that.
And your proposal goes where, along the road in place of these trees?
I think the best approach would be, if you look at the this chart that I gave you, if evergreens were to be along the yellow areas with the ornamentals planted in front of them to off the net while the desert green. I think the ornamental selection is very nice, however, it doesn't screen for half the year. And many of the shrubs that are indicated here are only at the most six feet tall. So we're talking about an eight-foot-tall fence surrounding this thing. Some of the materials that will, if they are the same, I presume will be the same, as they're stored at Keen, these double stacks of, you know, two pallet high stacks of fuel tanks for ten feet tall. So it's entirely possible that the material stored in the yard is going to be even higher than the eight-foot fence that's proposed. So not only will we be able to see directly in and see all this random stuff, we also, to move it a little bit, we'll also be higher.
No matter what you put in there, though, you're gonna see it from the road because the road sits up higher than that piece of property. So I didn't care if you put a twenty-foot fence in there.
My answer is saying, fine, you know, because that's our regulation. When we heard earlier, our chairman said, if we adhere to our site plan regulations, we got to a drive-through regulation to keep it fair.
That is right, and I will also quote our regulations that says landscaping and screening shall be provided at the discretion of the planning board with proper regard to adjacent properties, public highway and within the site, including interior landscaping and parking areas. So the planning board has, does have the discretion to decide what and where, and how much, what kind of trees, and all that business. So, again, it's not one of those, that's all.
We've talked greatly about the appearance of the building, about landscaping around the building, but the fact of the matter is this application is two-thirds pavement with random stuff stored there, which is not, the building's gonna look great. I think the building's fine, landscaping around the building is nice, I like everything about that. But we need to protect the community from view into this storage yard and loading area.
So Chairman, I think that, I'd like to just add one thing that part of the reason that the store is moving from Keen is lack of storage. So when pictures depicted of double-high stacks of oil tanks, the intent of their move, obviously, is to have more storage and not have a stacked.
Vast areas of that food yard were vacant on the day when I took this, okay? And I understand that the self-storage facility is where most of the stuff is stored undercover currently at Keen.
And again, you know, as pointed out, we're eight feet different on the road versus, you know, the actual storage yard. It's gonna be extremely difficult and take many, many years to grow vegetation tall enough to screen that from the road.
So I think you're saying that we can't do it a long?
You're saying that it won't be effective.
Saying, take that into consideration, that, you know, the intent, as a, you know, as someone who does this all the time, and I understand the intent of of screening to unseat any features, it's, you know, it's a normal requirement. In most cases, you don't have a situation where your site is down in a hole like eight feet. And when you do, you know, typically, a dealt with the board that, you know, is understanding the fact that, you know, you have a requirement for a certain-sized tree at the time of planting, that is what's going to be planted, and that will not likely screen for many years. While the intent and purpose is there, it takes numerous years to get through the trees, to get to the site to actually provide the screening there.
And there are other methods of screening besides vegetation, would you not agree?
I agree with that.
Physical barriers, the way that the lot is used, the way materials are arranged in the lot.
We'd have to have something, if there were a physical barrier, you mean a fence, something like that, a solid fence. And that would have to be eight feet plus, I don't know, maybe another eight feet, possibly sixteen feet high. Always around that, to screen it from the road, because that's lower than the road, that's what we're talking about there. You've got eight feet there, you're looking over top of it. So then, you're sitting in a car, so you'd want at least six feet more, maybe even eight feet, so you've got a total of sixteen feet of a big giant.
Two acres, there's a two-acre yard and loading area that we're gonna be looking at.
I don't know if I'd rather look at a fence like that or rather look at that yard with strawberry. Think of just a giant wall like that. I wouldn't wanna look at it. How about the rest of the board?
Well, they already addressed the solid fence issue the last meeting with the wind and stuff like that. It wouldn't be a good idea for that, if that's something.
Sixteen footer probably not, especially.
Take into consideration.
Now, we can ask them to put in more evergreens along that, you know, yet he's got a point, the three-inch diameter, what's gonna take quite a while for them to spread up to the sixty, but they will eventually do it.
To eventually collide path problems.
They won't, if they choose the proper selections.
Well, they're looking for doors.
Evergreens are gonna go big.
Well, they've already got arborvitae and blue spruce, okay, proposed along there, and the selections that they've made. But I'm giving you the finished site. The, let's see, the spruce that they're proposing has a thirty-foot kind of maturity, and the variety of arborvitae that they're, that they propose has a, has a kind of maturity twenty to thirty feet. So they've already selected varieties that will not cause problems in the future, so for them to put more of those in, I think would be a service to the community that elected us to serve on this board.
And if we were to do that, how many would you suggest?
I would suggest to put them, let's see, the arborvitae, they are, they have a nine-to-twelve foot spread of maturity, so I would say either ideally, they would be staggered as they are in this prunus. So sort of this kind of a zigzag situation close together. Because, as you know, one tree, the depth of one tree doesn't provide much screening, but a staggering of trees does. So I would advocate for screening the entire, if you look at the handout that I gave you, across the front, beginning on this side of the drive-in, evergreens along there, and any area where there are not really evergreens, all along this face of the building.
Down to where they show the trees here, you're talking about.
The trees in the corner, yep.
Now, what is that dotted line right there?
That just denotes pretty much the storage.
That's where you're sorting. So it's not a fence, it's just designates where the storage is gonna be.
Yeah, they give us an acreage for that, it's one point three acres, and then the balance of the loading area is an additional adds up to be a little over two acres.
So would you be in favor of substituting these trees for the spruce and arborvitae? I see you have a bunch of different trees there, a lot of different shrubs, let's look, you got.
There must be shrubs.
You got spruce there, see, these are the spruce, one, two, three, look for the spruce, what are those? Arborvitae's right there.
Here are ten spruce and nine arborvitae shown across that area that I'm describing.
So what about making them all spruce and arborvitae is what you're suggesting?
I'm suggesting increased number of arborvitae because it's a dense conical shape that has more root to it year-round.
And replacing some of these other trees, shrubs?
I would say put the arborvitae behind those, and the shrubs are there picturing already. I think the two layers of shrubs and trees, this is a great approach. It'll be very attractive and it will also accomplish the function of screening.
What are your thoughts, Larry?
Yeah, we have the deciduous, but not the.
I mean, I think, you know, again, it would make sense if that's what the board requested, that we switch out some of these for evergreens and, you know, minimize, obviously, the shrubs that are not going to provide the screening that the board would be looking for. If the intent is to screen the storage yard, then by all means, we will screen the storage yard. Double up on vegetation. For no particular reason or requirement, seems a little, I guess, above and beyond and looks nuts.
Double up, you mean, by double up adding to what you already have here with the other?
Correct. It would be, it would be the preference to switch, you know, switch it out to create the screen that.
That would be fair.
That sounds good.
That would be fair.
So we move the sphiraea and the forsythia, and we place those shrubs with arborvitae or spand or spruce.
And they've got a couple of cormacles in there too, which can be replaced.
You go around.
Well, then, then they can stay there and the arborvitae can go around them. You're gonna be putting arborvitae like with those trees, aren't you?
Correct.
Well, you can with depth, but, again, it's a double up on it, is like Steve was saying, and he's actually correct. You know, we're asking for screening, instead of making a double screening there, you want arborvitae, then take those trees out and put arborvitae.
Yeah, if we're looking for a kind of a staggered double row, I would suggest removing what's there and adding that double row to screening your request.
You lost me in the removing what's there and adding a double row.
Yeah, removing what's proposed and creating a staggered double row is what you're looking for. That would achieve the, you know, so whatever trees are there, and whatever shrubs are there that aren't deciduous, I would suggest replacing those with deciduous so that we're accomplishing what.
The stagger.
Correct.
That probably would be a better idea, give them more room for growth. What's the rest of the board think about that? Yes?
Sure.
Yes? Dave?
I have a problem with moving the
Victoria, the maple?
No, 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 it's a shrub.
The forsythia?
Forsythia. I think at least in the springtime, it provides a nice color. And when space proffering, they can grow and make a nice fence.
But in winter, it's a little.
Intent of screening here, I mean, the intent is not for pretty, like, normal, you might be for, you know, infestation in the springtime and something like that. The intent here, or a suggestion here anyways, is to screen that entire story here. The only thing that's gonna do it. Year-round. Talking about, only thing that'll do it is evergreen, like arborvitae. So that's why. Yeah, you too. Michael? You agree with what?
No, with Steve, never with Steve. No, I agree with that, that's double screening, that's good.
Remove that, because we go into a double screening of the arborvitae, and just arborvitae then, not the spruce?
It's good, the arborvitae to guarantee green wall.
Yeah.
Spruce adds, as you know, spruce adds texture, it looks nice, so.
And stagger it up, create some different elements.
Okay.
But it's not a straight screen of.
So.
It's not professional.
Yes. You think that staggering part of it?
Yeah.
Fits the bill?
I think he knows how to do it, so that we can.
James?
I agree.
Richard? So, one other thing, where are we doing it? Are we doing it from, Victoria suggested to do it from, as you can see, the corner of this building here, and you can see that, and all the way down through there. Or the other thing is to do it right from the beginning of the storage area with this dotted line and all the way to there.
I think it makes sense to do it right from the beginning of the storage area rather than just that little dinky area and then carry it down to there myself, that's just my opinion.
And then lead some of the other isotopes, like he has it right there.
Yeah.
Actually, yes. Arborvitae's right there. So actually, he already has all the vitals.
Yep.
I would think. There's one there. No, it isn't, the sugar maple's there. So. No, that's a turning area for the traffic.
Like, from the east side of the driveway.
At the beginning of the storage yard.
Right there, all the way here to there.
The regulation says storage and loading area, we're gonna need to include that.
Does, but they also say it's the discretion of the planning board, that's what we're doing here.
The discretion?
Be discreet, no. Deciding where it should go. So it's reasonable to put it from, I don't know, I guess you said, or you said, from that corner of the driveway around there to there.
Yes, what we still do would be to get some up in here, which then would minimize the view that way, and just kind of leave those there. Because again, the loading, the loading is also gonna happen, you know, early morning, before anything, and it's much further away. So I would suggest that we add some additional here to kind of block this as you're coming through to that area, because this really, this in itself isn't really loading, it's a bay door. So we can leave those, maybe throw in one or two. I just don't wanna get too close to it, I guess.
And where are they?
Right here.
Right in front there, oh, okay.
Yeah, also, I'll give a small story to that availability.
So, that sounds like the solution, doesn't it?
Yep.
It does, okay.
Do you want to repeat it so that I can record it?
So what it's gonna be is that there are gonna be arborvitae's and the spruce, stagger row, I think you would call it, stagger row, from the east side of the driveway, all the ways in front of the storage. all the ways in front of the storage area, and around the corner, that corner, which is again, the east corner, and ending where the grasses are. And they're going to be replacing the trees that are showing there now.
And shrubs.
And shrubs, yep. And shrubs.
And then he's going to, oh, you, to.
Right, at, at the beginning of the driveway, too.
But then he said a couple more on the other side of the driveway.
West side.
Yeah, we could add two additional spruce in that area.
Yeah, you mentioned the propane tanks being there.
Yep. We spread them out.
If you can fit them in, yeah, okay. A couple of spruce on the westerly side of that driveway, that's what. And those aren't replacing any vegetation, the ones that are shown are going to stay there, and these are in addition to.
Correct.
All right, I think that's straight now. Yes, while we. Talk about traffic here. But yeah, he did, people mentioned the traffic in the presentation. I'm sorry. And those figures you did, I think you said in your presentation, that you gave those figures, you recalculated figures to the state, and the state had no problem with them, and they didn't trigger traffic study because less than 100.
Yeah, I, we didn't give them to them, I had a direct conversation with Frank, who issued the permit from the district, and again, he wasn't concerned because we're nowhere close to about 100 trips in the peak hours.
Okay.
That would be the only thing that would cause concern for him.
All right, then, it looks like that's ironed out. What else were we waiting for here? There are a number of permits you need to get, DES alteration of terrain permits.
Correct.
Correct.
And the, do you have your DOT access permit, is that pending, or yours have that?
We have, we, we're actually ultimately getting a mended one, because we actually opened the road of the drive a little bit, so it's based on updated one.
Okay, so it's still, we'll say it's still pending. Pending, uh, natural DES sewer discharge permit.
We have that pending, the AOP.
Pending, okay.
We were clear on that?
Yeah. You're clear on that now?
Yep.
They were last time.
Oh, they were last time? Oh, okay, it didn't look, the, the letter that I saw, it didn't look like it was clear on, yes, resolve that, okay.
We're locked in for height.
You're locked in for height. DES public water system permit?
Uh, we do not meet the threshold of 20, 25 months, so.
Okay.
Well.
All right, so we won't be doing that one. Uh, see, EPA construction general permit?
That'll happen at the time.
Department of Engineers, do you have your general permit?
Yep, that'll be at the time of construction.
Okay. Those are all the ones I can think of, anybody else? So, are we ready to make a motion? If we do make a motion, it has to have any conditions which would be, oh, yes, sir.
Is, is it public?
Yes, yes. Come right up. Check, check.
Check, check, there you go. Mr. Chairman, for the record, Jack Franks, Avenue Development Group here tonight, I've got a letter to read into the record, and I'll give it to Julius for the record afterwards. It was originally set for 8:24, but I've added 9:14:23. Dear Mr. Self and members of the planning board, I'm very enthusiastic about the plan by FW Web to locate a distribution facility in Swansea. This would be a great addition to Swansea, and our workforce housing development on Route 10 could provide housing for some of Web's employees. I'm writing to encourage you to provide the same level of architectural and aesthetic counsel to FW Web as you did to the two Avenue Development Group projects that the board reviewed in 2022 and 2023, ensuring the rural aesthetic character that was applied to our developments. During the public hearings for Avenue Development Group Affordable Housing Projects Board members made note that the visibility of our buildings to the traveling and local public. The proposed location of FW Web is very open and highly visible location, thereby impacting the neighborhood. As I reviewed the elevations provided in the packet, it became apparent that the proposed building has a roof line with a very minimal and almost imperceptible pitch with no architectural elements along the exterior of the building that would make the building pleasing to the eye and to the viewer. I encourage and request that the board provide the same review standard and the same design requirements that were provided and imposed to the two Avenue Development Group Affordable Housing Projects. All of these are considered commercial buildings, and the same requirements imposed on us should apply to every commercial building in Swansea. As an example, the schools are no closer to the applicant's proposed location than the Homestead Mill is to the Swansea West Workforce Housing Development Project. There are no other buildings with a minimally pitched roof closer to the proposed location than the buildings with a flat roof, more nanotech powers generator, et cetera, are to the Plainview Senior Housing Project that was recently approved. If the board does not provide similar counsel to FW Web and require the same from them and any other commercial building development in Swansea as it did our two developments, it will further support the contention that Avenue Development Group's affordable housing developments were treated in a discriminatory manner and singled out because of the type of housing being provided. Respectfully submitted, Jack Franks, President and CEO of Avenue Development Group.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Anyone have any comments? Pretty self-explanatory. Okay. Having heard that letter, does anyone want to address the roof structure on this particular building, or any other one in Swansea?
This time.
No, this time, okay. So, yes.
I have a question about the storage, you know, is there going to be a limit to how wide storage materials will be?
Uh, be flexible, I don't think there's, I don't think we have anything installed.
We should condition.
We can put a limit on it.
Let's put a limit.
What are you suggesting?
It should not exceed the height of the fence, which is eight feet, right?
Let's see, and let me take a look at your pictures here. I don't think we should limit, limit it to eight feet, that's kind of short for storage. Twelve feet, how about, I don't know, I'm thinking maybe 10 feet in that area there. What's the rest of the board think? If we put a limit on it at all? What?
Can I ask a question of the rest?
Oh, the rest?
The current racking that you have in the key storage area, what is the vertical per, per tier? Do you know that? I'll stop here.
For the record, Jamie Anderson, Bailey Construction. As far as what's it at Keene right now, I'm not exactly familiar with the height of the racking. Typically, what, what Web would also have is some outside cantilever pipe rack, which would generally be up near the proximity of the building. I think it's typically about 16 foot uprights would be, and it would be stored on cantilever arms out off the racking. I guess my question for you guys is, is there a, a bylaw on the height allowance of storage? If it's not screened?
No.
Okay.
The planning board can still stipulate.
Understood.
But getting back to that, what is the standard rack height? You're talking about the cantilevered pipe rack?
Yes, the, the uprights would be either 16 or 18 feet.
16 to 18 feet on?
Yep.
Until it grows up, but you know, just have them put that landscape in there so it'll hide that type of stuff, and we probably shouldn't limit them to eight feet if we're going to expect those bushes to grow 20 feet.
Yeah, we just said that some of the trees are 20 to 30 feet, so. No, that'd be a, that's a fault.
Could we, you know, seeing how we had them do that, should we limit their rack door to what, 16 feet? You're talking about standard 16 feet?
Yeah.
16 foot enter.
Like, like the seat.
12 feet. 12 feet you're talking about, maybe?
Well, it's, it's hard, it's hard to judge if it appears like this figure, I don't, actually, there is, it looks like there's a standing rack, and I don't know if it's a three-foot vertical between, can you address that?
Looking at that, Stefan, what do you have for a question?
So the double boundary of floor that surrounds the site, that's going up towards the road.
It's going to be against the building, it's going to be right there, or not building, but against the storage areas there, right there.
But this takes into consideration some of everything else.
That everything what?
Is everything like the foot pressure, the follow must be right there?
The storage area you're seeing is lower than.
Than the road.
Yes, and so is that, that trees are being planted as well. I missed your point.
Is that correct? The location where you proposed the new, uh, breeds replaced, if we still were bringing the fossil flowers.
Well, the plants are local.
So feet B plus, we don't have that depression, which I think it is, Stefan. Yes, hypothetically, this would sit a couple of feet lower than that. You know, you are, when you're carrying this corner here, the road goes straight ahead, you're basically looking at the mall. Just on my right here today, it's very dangerous to actually turn your head to be looking towards the storage yard, because you're coming at a position like the mall straight ahead. Well, some of this might be, I understand the intent, I just want to look at it from a practicality standpoint of when you're driving.
Let's get back to the storage, back to the storage.
Yeah, that, that racking that you're seeing in those photos is kind of a slide-in style, that's not typically what they'll do. Of course, that yard has been inundated, they've been looking for a new facility for years, so they're kind of limping along with what they can do there. I would hope that we could try to get something close to a 16 feet in height.
What could you get by one?
16 would be great.
What could you get by one?
Not like to go any lower than 12, 12 would be.
12 to 14.
Yes, that'd be.
Both is a pre-later.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're generally 30 inches, sorry, I didn't answer your initial question, they're generally three feet to 30 inches separation, so.
And you have a much larger storage area capacity.
Yes.
So it doesn't have to be a significant, doesn't have to be important.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Steve?
Would be, I would say a big story, how much height would they leave in the racks?
How much higher would what be, what do you mean?
I'm storing something. The rack, would I store this side? Or would a rack be the maximum where I'm storing?
So your question is, I think what I understand is if it's a 16 foot rack and stacking to the full height in potential, is that what you're?
I don't know if I have any sense, like, it's a thing and a half, I would be defensive. If you have to talk to the storage rack, how much height would you be storing?
I'd probably say it's a six foot fence, and I don't think that they're going to be stacking tanks that high, that's probably out of there. So if it, if the limit was, hypothetically, if the limit was 14 feet, then the upright of the post would be 14 feet, so that the arm, highest arm would be roughly 12 feet, so that it could store two feet higher than that 12 foot arm. So.
Why don't you see if you can get by the 14 feet, you said it's 14 feet, that's the top of the post rack, it would be a bit lower.
Yep.
And if you can't get by, you can always come back to the planning board and say, well, look, this, this isn't working, you do, maybe we'll say nothing, or we'll work with one or the other.
Very fair.
Let's say important.
Way out, what's the matter, so how are you going to be storing, or what you would be storing? What I'm getting at is, show us where the racks are going to go in that sort area, so we can get a better handle on what rack.
Generally, we would put some of that rack over here behind the building, so it'd be up against the building. I know that this grade mat drops fairly significantly right here, so we're not, probably not going to utilize that space. But it would be outside this 150 foot line, and there'd be maybe a line here, and it's kind of a double side, so the forklift would go in, load it, and then back out, load the truck that deal. So it'd be towards the back of the yard, they probably wouldn't do it in the front.
Wouldn't all the racks then, is what you're saying?
Not at all, no, no, I, unfortunately, I was just in Lewiston, Maine today, when they were, were about to turn over a store, and they were loading the yard, and I wish I had taken some pictures, I took some pictures, but not actual product, to show you kind of.
So are you saying that the parking storage area is going to be on the backside of the mezzanine warehouse to the, I guess it's to the north of the parking area, the parking aisles that are shown there?
That's what he said.
I mean, we haven't fully done the, the yard layout yet, but normally, it would be on pads in the back of the building, so that aesthetic hits.
I didn't, I didn't understand that that was, I thought that this whole warehouse section would, all the materials would be stored under cover on the building side, and the storage would be where things were stored outside.
Yeah, that's, anything that could live outside, both oil tanks that you saw in the photos, well, they're tanks, rooftop, there's PVC pipe, soil pipe.
If we eliminate on the, then this is the area that's to be the outdoor storage, right? This is to be the area that's the loading area.
Truck, truck.
This is also going to be outdoor storage area?
Well, what I had said is, generally, we would put a, a concrete pad here with the racking behind it, but in this case, this areas, the, the grade change is significant enough that you'd be too left to right to load anything onto it.
Okay, so you're not going to use that as a storage area, is that what you're saying? Because of the grade?
Yes.
Something specific that you store there, you pick that area out, and then you put a pad there.
In this, in this particular project, it's not going to work because of significant gravity.
Okay, so all the upper storage will be limited to this area, that you depicted as, as your upper storage.
Yep, and then, I wouldn't, there's a wheel call area here, for example, so a contractor, something that would get loaded, the forklift would meet them here. It's a loading area, but not to say there couldn't be storage against this back wall here while it's waiting to get picked from the way.
That would be a long term thing where this space is to be.
Yep.
You want to talk to him? One more?
That's clear, no need. I just want to point out, this, I thought we mentioned below, 32 probably this way, and coming here today, made a point to kind of spot where this building would be, now Brandon would get the seat in the brush, because it is down off the road, but when you're coming down 32 here, you're actually coming down a slight wave, and if a wheel or lane was halfway half a mile away, you can see this, this field, this is rings.
Through the airport fence, you guys looking through the airport?
No, they're not even looking through the fence.
No?
You're looking, Jason to the fence or oil of the fence, I can't, the fence was not in my view, I saw the fence over here, that helped me spot this location from that half a mile away. So there, you know, there's nothing. So there, you know, there's nothing hiding this side from you thirty-two, I just want to point that out, because you're talking about all the, you know, trying to hide it. You're not, it's, it's a big building, and say, ultimately.
Yeah, you'll never hide it.
I just wanted to point that out.
Uh, the only, I meant, uh, the traffic studies, you know, there's only the study just about what the impact of this property will be. We know there's a lot of other activities going on on Route thirty-two. Um, you know, it's like, the studies never include everything, right?
Yeah.
So that's always the other thing. As far as the building, kind of made it like a barn, made it a lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If you answer that on the backside, is there any possibility of pulling that ornament of grass along that back edge?
Yep.
I think we've already sold out. Problem is, we're, we're kitchen hole between the edge of the storage and the basin. Obviously, we can't plant from that basin, and we also can't plant over here because we're taking extra runoff from thirty-two that's coming in and out. So we're limited, and we're going to plant. On this side. Again, we did put grasses that are on berm, it's already been three to four feet high. Grasses, again, will be during growing season, three to four feet high. And higher, depending on, you know, the blooms that grow off them, they could be up to seven feet. Um, but again, that's unlimited area of maybe only three feet in width, and you really can't stick a tree or, you know, a flatworm three feet of wood.
Let's get back to that height. Sorry. We're talking fourteen feet, I think. And then if fourteen feet doesn't work for them, they can come back to the planning board, to modify our site plan, and tell us why they need more, or less, we take less. So. What else do we have? I think that we've got a lot of bits there, let's see, if it were to be passed through the motion, the motion and condition would be that. The landscaping has to be modified to have urbanities replacing the shrubbery that's already shown there now. And that is administrative, the land use office can see that it's on the plan and pass it that way, they don't have to come back for a compliance hearing. Uh, let's see, uh, the height of fourteen feet for the storage racks, that's a condition that you don't need a compliance hearing for, that I know, because. Let's see what else, um. I think the only, only other condition would be the permits they have to have, so let me name those off as well. Again, these are all administrative and don't require a compliance hearing. So. We have your D E S alteration and constraint permit. Hampshire DOT access permit. Do I have your D E S sewer discharge permit? F A A permit.
Hold on a second, can I, I'm taking it, best, um, what was that, the DOT access permit?
DOT access permit, we had, we have your D E S sewer discharge permit.
Yeah, subsurface.
Subsurface, is that what it is?
Septic, yeah.
Okay, sub, subsurface for the septic, yeah, yeah, not discharge, was no, you're going to.
No problem.
Okay, subsurf- surface discharge permit.
Yeah, got it.
It's a regular septic system.
Yep, yeah.
F A A permit. E P A construction general permit. And Army Corps of Engineers general permit.
We haven't addressed landscaping, we are creating the dumpster. Often what we require is some sort of an enclosure for dumpsters.
We do, but they're, they're putting the dumpster right there, is from what I was following, right there, so. Yeah, I suppose you could make a, put a fence around it, you've got screening right there, and be as urban as it is, and you've got screening way down there. Uh, they gotta be able to come in, you could put a fence on either side, but they gotta be able to come in with a truck and pick that thing up, so you're always going to see a problem from the front anyway.
It can be gated.
What do you mean?
It can be gated, I'm.
It could be, but I mean.
We always ask people to enclose the dumpster.
So you want to have them put an enclosure around the dumpster, yeah. Okay, that can be added, conditions in, an enclosure, that'd be a fence, the enclosure of fence we're talking about here, six-foot fence, talking about here.
Cover the height of the dumpster, or height of dumpster.
Yeah, wouldn't have jumping. And so, and gated, so meaning that'd be a gate in the front there, okay, so that's another condition.
Be, would it be agreeable to make that a green? I know it seems, it's hard to imagine.
They'd make it any color you want it, what's it called at this point?
Your dumpsters are probably green or white, right?
Yeah, could we make it, put a pitched roof on it, so it fits every.
We'll get in.
I say boring, right?
I'm just saying, steel.
Oh, no, we're talking about a fence around it, we don't care what color the dumpster is, right?
No, 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 what I'm saying is, uh, you know, a steel-colored fence around there doesn't, you know, make it somewhat attractive by putting color.
Yeah.
Green, pink.
I'm not trying to be absurd.
Green sliding fence?
Most, most mice live out of town, green.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's good enough.
So, we'll, we'll say green. Tonight we're down.
Sure.
Green. Okay. Um, what else? Anything else?
Make a motion that we accept it, that the conditions are specified.
Okay, a motion by Richard Lane to approve the site plan with the conditions that were noted, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion?
Would you like me to read the conditions once again to be sure we've got it right?
Yes, you read those conditions.
Okay, what I have here is a condition that storage be limited to fourteen feet in height, open storage, right?
Yep.
I should say that. Um, landscaping modified with amenity, replacing planters as stated above, referring to the discussion that we had. Administrative permits to be achieved, colon, Hampshire D E S A O T, DOT access permit, Hampshire D E S subsurface discharge permit, F A A permit, U P A, the current.
E P A, yeah.
E P A. E P A construction general permit, Army Corps of Engineering general permit, six-foot-high fence enclosure for, for the dumpster in green.
Yeah, I don't think we'll need the Army Corps, and it's just typical E P A general permit.
Okay, that concluded in that?
Yeah, the last one, I think, is not necessary.
The Army Corps of Engineers, yeah, so, because, yeah, the E P A has a regular general permit anyways, so. Yeah, let's take that one out of there, because that's just. Should we have done it yet? Okay, those are the conditions. You, you made the motion, you seconded the motion, is there any further discussion? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And. It's done. So all those changes and to the plan have to be made, you can bring it up to the land use office, they'll verify that they're there, and that will be that, you don't want to complain here.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. I think we have a few small items.
There is.
There is.
Yeah.
Oh, you were here?
I'm here, I'm in.
This, let's just take, take the market basket on, we can forget about the, I think we have the building and stuff on there, we, yeah. So the next item up would be market basket, landscaping around and a paved parking area that, that they're going to put in back there, am I correct? That's what it's going to be, and that area back there is existing, and you're paving.
Yeah, just, this, this is towards the very end, certainly all around.
Landscaping there. Yeah, that part of it is already in, correct?
What's that?
The landscaping by the building.
This stuff here, yes.
Right, the.
Oh, yes, yes.
This is why you're going to call it in right here?
Uh, this?
This.
Yes.
So. That's what they've brought, that plan they've brought in shows the perimeter of the parking there, now that's existing parking. And there's a gray area there as to whether the planning board actually can make and put in a bunch of those trees there, since it's parking already, all they're doing is paving. And for our regulations, they don't really even have to come in for that, it's just paving an existing parking area. And it has landscaping there. So. I would suggest that it's up to them, yes, they want to put that, you know, make it to whatever's got to be there, like he's got it all shown on like, you know, phone, or there, some of them are not there. That's fine, but I don't know if the planning board can hold them for that.
I would agree, just for the fact that it's already there, yeah, already a parking lot, all they're doing is paving it.
Go ahead, many parking spaces are going to be.
None, well, the parks that are there are there, all they're doing is paving it. It's a parking area that's there.
Well, it's, yeah, it's not, not in any.
Right, not, not in the gravel, apparently, no.
No.
So it was all previously approved, uh, really, that's why it's gravel, the kind of bulked out spot.
And now it's going to be pavement, which doesn't change anything for the impervious surface, because they're both considered the same, doesn't change any drainage over there, that's fine.
Right.
So. See the plant?
I've shown, I've shown.
It's fine with me, I've shown.
Yep, pretty.
So, then we need a motion, and do you have anything to say about, about it?
I don't, I'm here for your pleasure.
Appreciate you coming in for that.
So what's for the motion, that we approve it, or?
Motion is to approve the landscaping plan as presented.
Well, second.
Well, by Michael York to approve that the landscaping plan for Market Basket as presented, as seconded by Brandon Self, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, have a good weekend.
Okay, so, George, you're being on.
Didn't notice that, I guess, okay.
Okay. What, you have one thing? No, we don't. We do not need to comment on that whatsoever.
Can I swear about it after?
For a German, so. Motion for a German?
Oh, so.
By Michael York, seconded by who?
I'll second.
Second by Brandon Self, all those in favor, hit the saying aye.
Aye.
What did you want?
I was waiting, you're going through any, when I go, I should just watch them.
At this point, I'm sorry, I'm getting really too long, yeah. We'll be having public hearings on it anyway. Right, we know. Right, we know.